Screen on. Last night about seven o'clock, my husband comes in and goes, "I have to attend your council meeting."[766.45][766.45](laughter) They would have called me by now.[771.36][771.36](laughter)
We're doing it from here.
Okay. All right. I am calling to order the May 29, 2024 Fountain City Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Protemrick?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Applegate?
Here.
Councilmember Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
I have seven members present.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That takes us on to item 4.1, Presentations. Chief Christian, if you could come down and please introduce our guest.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I'm very happy and eager to introduce our rare guest to come down to Fountain. Sheriff Joe Royball is here tonight. He's going to give us a little update on county happenings, mostly with the Sheriff's Office, and we're very happy to have him here. Sheriff Joe Royball.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Pleasure.
All right. Give us, we have fantastic, wonderful, this is the best police department, you know that, right? And I know you can't say anything, you've got to take the fifth.
Best police department.
I was very careful the way I said it.
In the county seat of the best sheriff's office, right?
Yes, and you're here to give us just a slightly bigger picture than just what we get from our police department, so.
Yes, thanks for inviting me here this evening. I understand I'm limited on time. I'll be glad to come back and actually do a presentation of what's happened my first year within office. I find it very important for an elected official like yourselves to be not only accountable to the people, but present. So I have intentions, deliberate intentions, to go through Al Paso County throughout the region and make myself available to our constituents, right, all of our constituents and here today in Fountain. This is along the lines of a town hall meeting where we are accountable, we can answer questions offline, so I'll be available to your citizens here for a moment, for some time after, you know, my brief, brief time here presenting to you. I would like to say that the collaboration and the relationship between your fine police department and the Sheriff's Office is absolutely wonderful. I want to let the citizens know that our collaboration happens daily and it starts at the top, but really the hard work is done, the important work is done at the line level, on the streets, where if we have a call down south in our south districts, Fountain is there all the time. If Fountain needs help, we respond. They do not hesitate. Those relationships are very important for public safety because criminals don't know boundaries, they don't say, "Oh, well, I'm no longer in Al Paso County, so I've got to stop committing crimes because I'm in Fountain." It just doesn't happen that way. So it's important for me, and I just confirmed with your fine chief, that I do swear in all of his officers and give them deputy sheriff jurisdiction as well in unincorporated Al Paso County. So their efforts of fighting crime, if it begins in Fountain and they find themselves in security in Whitefield, they don't stop. They continue, of course, with our help and vice versa. If a crime is committed in unincorporated Al Paso County and we find the suspect down in Fountain, we continue those efforts with the help, of course, of Fountain. Something that I implemented almost immediately in my first term in office is a regional training academy, and your fine chief is taking advantage of that. If you have a new hire and they're not post-certified, I invite them regionally to join the Sheriff's Office post, which is police officer standard and training. That's the state requirement for a Class 1 police officer to join the academy. And for the citizens here, I charge the Fountain Police Chief nothing to attend the academy. And that's very important. When I first started, I had a business, local business owner asked me, "Sheriff, how much are you going to charge? I think you can pay for the academy by charging these outside agencies." Because I've had Teller County attend, Fremont County attend, Monument, Manitou, and now the state of Colorado through parole, they're sending people to the regional academy. He says, "You can make money on this." I said, "I'm not charging the other agencies a dime." He says, "Why not?" So the taxpayers already pay for my academy. If I charge the chief here to join the academy, I'm really charging the taxpayers twice because they pay county tax, they pay Fountain City tax, and I will not do that to the taxpayers. Also, it's more important for that collaboration for law officers to begin that relationship, have the exact same training. And so when they get out of the academy, they already have that rapport, that relationship built, and they get out on the streets, it just continues, and they know one another. They know similar tactics. And I think it's very important to maintain those relationships. So I'm not, I don't think this next academy, we have anybody from Fountain, but so far, the chief has taken advantage of every one of my academies, and I'm hoping to continue that relationship and again, not charge the citizens a dime more than necessary that they already pay.
Thank you.
You know, from our tactical teams, it goes across the board, our collaboration. What we're seeing here in Al Paso County as far as crime, I'll remind the citizens, school's out. And when school's out, we have the teenagers and criminal trespass autos and automobiles get broken into during the summer. Traffic has been a focus as of late here in Al Paso County. The last few years, Al Paso County has been the number one county in the state for auto fatalities, and that is a statistic I do not want to be number one at. And so we've had deliberate and intentional efforts in our traffic unit. If you follow us on EPC Sheriff's Office and social media, we have a traffic trivia that's posted almost daily of those efforts and the amount of speeders we have caught. We have a monthly meeting, it's Military Collaborative, where the chiefs, and your fine chief joins us as well, and hate to say, but some of the people that we're stopping that are going in excess of 20 to 30 over are our military brothers and sisters. And so we're going to reach out, I'm going to reach out to the generals and say, "Hey, I need your help. I need your help with your soldiers and your service members." Remind them, because the ticket they get, they get a little reminder from me, and I'm sure they have to report it to their commanding officer, but all of Al Paso County, we need to slow down and be careful. You know, road rage incidents and traffic, it's unbelievable here in Al Paso County. And every day, we issue multiple tickets of people going 25, 30 miles an hour over the posted speed limit, including school zones, which I know school's out, but while school was in, people just don't have the respect for school zones. So it's important for me to keep our families safe and increase our enforcement of traffic. So you'll see that in unincorporated Al Paso County. Any questions from the council?
What do you see as the two major issues that citizens are most concerned with right now?
The number one, without a doubt, has to be a political hot topic, which is immigration. We had a busload of undocumenteds come from Denver and dropped off in downtown Colorado Springs, and so we had a lot of citizens concerned with that. And obviously, as an elected official, as a sheriff of the county, I get a lot of questions. The state passed a law in recent years, last couple of years, where it made it illegal for law enforcement to work with ICE, Immigration, Customs and Enforcement. And Teller County has pushed back on that, and I have joined those fights myself, along with the sheriff of Douglas County, and filed a lawsuit, along with the county commissioners of Al Paso County and the commissioners of Douglas County, filed a lawsuit against the state of Colorado and the governor to allow us once again to work with ICE. And why is this important? You know, for me, it's not, it's not a political issue. I am not going to do the federal government's job, but it impacts public safety. And anytime something impacts public safety, I'm going to address it head-on. And I'll give, I won't give any names, but here's a specific case where us working with ICE, where if I was allowed to work with ICE, we could hold a criminal, a specific criminal accountable. We had a report of sexual assault on a child, and a man had perpetrated and actually sexually assaulted three children, all at the age of seven. These were family members. This person was here illegally, undocumented, and we had the case. We made the arrest, three victims, age of seven, made the arrest. This person posted bond, and guess what? We no longer can find him. We have information that he is back in Mexico. I'm sure he'll come back across the border illegally. Here's a perfect example of where if I was able to work with ICE, this person will not be out there. I can almost guarantee he's out there victimizing more children. We have three confirmed cases, those are the ones we're made aware of. I'm sure there's more victims. If I was able to work with ICE, I could have reached out to ICE and say, "Here is a risk to our community. He's a flight risk, now proven flight risk because he fled the country to evade justice. I need you to place an administrative hold on this person." Even if he bonded out on the criminal charges here in the state of Colorado, ICE can place a hold on them and keep them in custody. Now, we do that with our citizens. If we feel somebody's a flight risk because they're from another state and they have really no ties to the state of Colorado, we can petition the court for our own citizens to either elevate bond or place a no bond if we believe this person is a threat to society, a risk to our community. Why is it that the state of Colorado says, "You know, Sheriff, you can't do that. You can't work with ICE." Doesn't seem right to me. I have the ability to enter a contract with every other federal agency, and I do. I work with the DEA, the FBI, the ATF, military, all the military installations. I work with every other federal agency, but I'm not allowed to work with ICE. The state of Colorado has made that political. Why haven't they said I can't work with the FBI? Doesn't make sense to me. And for those reasons, for public safety, for my ability to keep the community safe, I need to work with ICE, and that's why I joined along the sheriff of Douglas County and entered into a lawsuit. We'll see how far it goes, Madam Mayor.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah.
So Sheriff, thank you for being here. Can you just kind of answer for the public some of the challenges that we have with those that are house-challenged in the community and the rise in homeless population? What's that look like?
You and your organization trying to clean up some of our streets in our community?
It's a big problem, and one that taxpayers continually pay the bill. When we clean up the streets and the camps, and of course, that's a process, the sheriff, it is my responsibility, as mandated by the state, to deal with the civil process. And so it's not as easy as you identify a homeless camp and then I can send my deputies or the chief can send his cops to go and clean it up. Not that easy. We first have to identify, are they on public land or are they on private land? If they're on private land, we have to contact the owner of the land and determine if the owner has given them permission to be on the land. If the owner has given them permission, my hands are tied momentarily. Then we have to determine if it is a risk to the community and then go through the courts to try to get the people off the land. If the landowner says, "No, they don't have permission, they're trespassing," then we have to go through the eviction process. The law and the state has absolutely tied our hands and made this a hindrance. We do a good job, we go through that process because inside those homeless camps, they're like small towns, and crimes are being committed. Women are being victimized, sometimes sex trafficking inside the homeless camps. So we clean them up. We cleaned up one, which was close to your area here, behind Déjà Vu on B Street, a large camp where a fire was started. We worked in collaboration, you know, with Fountain and CSPD helped us as well to get that camp closed down. What happens when we arrest those people for crimes? They come into the jail. I'll remind the citizens here, remind the council, there's only one jail in Al Paso County, and we all pay for it, whether you live in Fountain, unincorporated, Colorado Springs, Manitou, Monument, it is one jail where everybody who's arrested goes to. That price tag for the jail that the citizens behind me, I pay for, that you pay for, $61 million a year. When we have people who are homeless and come to the jail or arrested on crimes, we're obligated, it's my responsibility to make sure they're healthy. So we provide health care to them, addiction counseling, oftentimes they are addicted. Mental health is huge in that population. We provide those services to our fellow citizen while they're in the jail. We get them healthy, we get them cleaned up, they go back out and find themselves homeless again. So really, it's a revolving door that costs taxpayers not only a lot of money, but also sometimes victimized because of that population. There are three reasons why people find themselves homeless. One, it's mental health, which we try to address when they're in the jail. Two, it's substance abuse and addiction, which also has a mental health component. That we can do something about. And the third, we can't do anything about, and they choose to be homeless. And people have, find it hard to believe that people choose to be homeless. It is a lifestyle, and those are the three reasons people find themselves homeless, or we find them homeless and we have to deal with them. Thanks for the question, council.
Yeah, so just one more question that I don't, you touched it briefly, but evictions, I get a lot of questions from our residents about, "Can't we just go in and just kind of get them out?" And I always tell them it's a process because the sheriff's apartment is tied. I sit on the Housing Authority Board, and that's one of our biggest things, is evicting people and those that kind of take up camp in blight buildings and things of that nature, that it's their resident now, and trying to evict them is a process in itself.
It is a process, and I swore to uphold the law and uphold the Constitution. And these people are still citizens of the United States. I have to ensure that their constitutional rights are not violated, that I follow the law and make sure the process is done appropriately. Because if I don't, I then add liability to the citizens. Because if I am sued and for violating their rights and not following the process, not following the law, and they are successful in that lawsuit, who pays the price tag? We all do, the citizens. We pay that lawsuit, we pay that fine. So not only So not only do I ensure we follow the Constitution and we don't violate the rights, but we also have to follow the law, so we reduce liability of the taxpayers.
Step back to the immigration issue for just a second. Many of the cities in this region have passed non-sanctuary resolutions. Now, we didn't pass a lot of resolutions during COVID because they were essentially unenforceable, right? And a lot of those resolutions for those cities, but does that put us at any risk or is there any reason why, in your opinion, you would think it would be valuable for us to consider a non-sanctuary city status resolution?
Now, I know that, that is a political topic. My stance is, anytime we are not allowed to work with ICE, it will affect public safety. We saw the videos of New York City. We see videos of Denver, where their overwhelming population. Me personally, if we don't take a hard stance and say, you must follow the law, taking no stance honestly is welcoming people to break that law and come to our doorstep. We see the camps, we see the reports where tens of millions of dollars was cut from Denver public safety, so they can divert those funds to the undocumented people that found themselves. Now, Denver's different. Denver opened the door and said, you can come, we are sanctuary. But if we're not saying we're not sanctuary, then it leads open for interpretation. I think every jurisdiction should take a stand on it. I think that strengthens my argument, my fight down here in El Paso County, to say, hey, I want this for public safety, Governor. We'll see how far that lawsuit goes. But Mayor, I think it's important to take a stance one way or another, because not taking a stance, in my opinion, is tacit approval. And we might find ourselves in a situation where we have a population that's hard to deal with, not to the extent of Denver, because Denver opened their doors, New York opened the doors, we see the problem there, where they're laughing at law enforcement's face. And I think it strengthens the tools for your chief and for my sheriff's deputies.
Okay, your number two issue? Immigration was number one, and then I think we're hearing a lot of people talk about the increase in crime. I mean, it just really, I know it's down overall, but it just seems like in the last month, we've seen just a drastic increase in crime. And it's, you know, we saw the effects of losing our police officer with people being out on the street and just doing crazy things, and we just seem to kind of see that. I mean, just again, today, somebody up in Colorado Springs rams a car through the front of a business, you know.
So the increase in crime, it's been my experience, I've been part of the sheriff's office for 28 years, I've been the sheriff now for almost a year and a half, and crimes more often than not be attributed to drug abuse. I spoke to somebody today about the idea of safe injection sites. Drugs by far is probably my number two, because mental health is associated with drug abuse. I have the largest, operating the jail, I have the largest mental health facility in the state of Colorado, by far. The amount of services we provide, the amount of citizens in that jail that need mental health care, outnumbers the state hospital. We have a backlog for the state hospital, people waiting to get there. State hospital can't get through there fast enough. So we are forced to provide services inside our facility, which I do, because often than not, there's not a hold, the people get out. And it's important for me that they be as healthy as possible when they're back out in our communities and meeting with the other citizens. So that drug use, safe injection sites, I know this is another political issue. Safe injection sites, that safe drugs should not even, those two words should not even be in the safe sentence. People will argue, well, we want people to remain healthy, and if we provide a safe place for them, provide clean needles, and then force them to seek counseling, maybe we can make a difference. That's not going to make any difference, that's going to make the problem worse. As the elected sheriff, I will fight against that. I wrote op-eds against safe injection sites, I testified against being light on drugs, I testified in favor of increasing penalties. Here's what safe drug sites will do. It is going to send a message to our youth, just like legalizing marijuana, I don't care where you stand on that, where you fall on that, our kids see what we're doing. Hey, the grownups say it's okay to smoke weed. The grownups say it's not that bad. So if the grownups can do it, so can I. If we say, hey, we'll provide clean needles in a safe site where you can shoot up your illicit drugs, it's sending a message to our youth, yeah, we say, don't do drugs, but do we really mean it when we're providing needles to other adults? That's one step away from providing the drug itself. Well, we better provide the drugs, because what they get from the street might have fentanyl in them, in the drugs, and be dangerous. That's a slippery slope. I will always fight against drug injection sites, it's sending the wrong message to our youth. So drugs is number two, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to be, I'm kind of watching the law that Pueblo passed just a couple weeks ago against safe injection sites in their city. It was good to see them take a stand, so we'll see how that goes.
Yeah, I encourage the county, of course, the county fought against it. If Fountain hasn't taken a stance, I strongly recommend you take a hard no stance against that. It sends the wrong message to our youth.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for the sheriff while he's here? Any staff? Chief Cristiani?
No questions, but I just want to, you know, thank the sheriff for coming down. I think it's very important. Madam Mayor, thank you for inviting him. It's important that the top law enforcement official in this region comes down and kind of gives the state of the union from his perspective. Even though I get the luxury of pretty much being able to talk to him whenever I want, I learn something every time he speaks, because his world is much different than mine. So I just want to thank him for coming down. Sheriff, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you again for, when you come forward to help us out with incidents, I was in court and got to see our officers and your deputies testify, and so.
That's great.
Really have a great team. And then I had a very close friend lose a family member this weekend, so they live in the county. And so I literally got to see the response when something like that happens, and I was very, very impressed. Everything from the minute they dial 911 to the coroner being finished was probably less than two hours. So it was very impressive, and I think, and we even had a beacon officer who was out without her, she was out without her normal officer, so she was out with her special officer. But it was just fantastic to see that in action, and citizens can be confident if they have an emergency like that, that they're in good hands.
Thank you. Sorry I experienced that, but I'm glad we were able to help.
Yeah, thank you very much. So, all right. Thank you. Anybody if you want to talk to him, he'll be out in the lobby maybe for a few minutes, and you can grab his card and whatever, but, all right, I don't see anybody jumping up. So, thank you so much for coming down, appreciate. Now you can fight the traffic on the way home. All right. That takes us on to board commission and committees appointments. We have none tonight. Correspondence, comments, and ex officio. I'm sorry?
Public.
That's okay, that's okay. I make mistakes all the time, don't worry about it. Correspondence, comments, and ex officio reports. We'll start with Mr. Traynor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one item I wanted to do a quick update on. Todd wasn't able to be here tonight, he had some other pressing things he had to deal with, but wanted to give an update on his behalf relative to Indiana. You've probably seen the lights starting to go up, CDOT's working on those now. They'll be working on the lighting, the electrical, and then we're going to be waiting on BNSF to get their signalization done. The hope and our tentative plans are June 20th or 21st, doing a ribbon cutting, and then the next week, being able to open the road. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do that at the same time, but hopefully the following week, we'll have that roadway opened and our folks will be able to drive on.
That's the CML conference.
Okay. I'll make sure I let them know that.
Yeah, okay. We'll be hearing from you in a few minutes.
You'll hear a lot from me tonight.
All right. John?
Yeah, same here. I'll save it for later.
Chief Cristiani?
Just real quick, one item, I will echo what the sheriff said. Summertime is now upon us, or at least kids are out of school, so we just call that summertime. We have noticed the uptick in the calls for service and some of the more serious things going on, some burglaries in the area. So just know that the police department is upstaffing where we can. Like I said, our SROs, they're in their training week this week after they've finished up with school, but then they're out in the field, so that'll supplement us by 10 officers throughout the different shifts we have in Fountain. So we are ready and prepared for the summertime calls. Just want to let everybody know that. Thank you.
Okay. What is the best way for a citizen to handle it? I know there was incident on Facebook recently where people were posting photos of children in the park that were not behaving correctly. It kind of bothers me that kids' photos are out there and people trying to get IDs. How would you like the citizens to handle that the best, so that the situation gets addressed, but we're still reserving the privacy of people that are children?
Sure. You know, I'm going to assume these are unaccompanied children in the parks. Obviously, if a parent or guardian could be identified, I would encourage the parent to go talk to the other parent. You know, but if that's not the case, and I think most of the problems we see are the unaccompanied youth in the parks, certainly call the police. We can go out there and obviously have a conversation, and, yeah, I mean, it's a concern, and that's, you know, the days of social media, a lot of unintended consequences take place. You know, if you're part of any neighborhood, any neighborhood page, there's always pictures of this kid doing this or this kid doing that, and a lot of it's kids being kids. But, you know, I think, I don't want to involve the police in everything. I really encourage, if somebody could figure out a way to go speak with the family themselves, I wouldn't see, if my kids were in the park, that parent going to that child and say, come with me, young man or young woman, we're going to go find your parents and we'll go have a conversation. I mean, I ultimately, Mayor, think that's the best way. Our officers are going to go out there and do police stuff, and that's not always the best answer, but it can make an impact as well, so that option's always there.
I think along that, Chief, in a day of social media, I think people want to get pictures to show proof that an incident happened. Is that always necessary, the case, that they have to do that if they're going to call officers? Because I think people just believe that, they're not going to believe me, so I got to get some type of proof, take pictures or get video of something happening.
Yeah, that's not true. I mean, of course, does it help? Sure. But if I have a parent taking the time to come into the police station, make a report that they saw something happen at the park, and they can describe the child, and we can figure out who that is, I don't have to have a picture or a video. We don't have that on a lot of things that we deal with. So as long as that citizen is willing to perhaps sign a complaint, if it's a ticket-worthy event that takes place, damage, for example, if somebody's damaging the park, and that parent says, I saw this kid do that, I don't know who it is, but this is what I saw, and they're willing to say that, then we don't need a picture or a video. So it does help, but it's not necessary.
Yeah, I think it's just too much CS.
Yeah, it's not necessary.
Yeah. Yeah, it just concerns me when kids' photos are put out there, so.
Yeah, especially with what Sheriff Royball was just talking about.
Right, right. Okay, over city clerk's office, anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, IT?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Okay, sir on the left here.
Yes, a couple things. First, last Friday, I went to VFW 6461's grand reopening. They've done a lot of upgrades to the place, painted the outside, really nice job that they've done, and I would highly encourage people to come down and check that out. This last Monday, VFW 6461 in American Legion Post 38 put on a very nice Memorial Day service to honor our fallen dead. Thank you for that, for all the hard work for both organizations. Finally, Memorial Day marks the unofficial start to summer. This is a time to where we can get out and enjoy things, enjoy our yards, enjoy being out in the neighborhood. However, it's also a time where people will ignore their yards and ignore their neighborhood, and that's when code enforcement gets called. Hey, this grass is this high, these weeds are doing this, this place looks unsafe. My response to people that complain about that is, you're bringing it on yourself. You don't keep your area clean, you don't mow it, and again, the standards are like 18 inches high on your weeds and grass, so, you know, you don't have to be out there every weekend or anything, but you at least got to keep it down, so we don't have vermin, snakes, insects, all that stuff being used as a breeding ground. So please, take care of your property, so that code enforcement doesn't have to come see you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
I just tell people, keep your weeds below knee height. Yeah, some people's knees are shorter than others, but keep it under knee height, and you'll probably be okay. All right, Cory?
You're good, nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Estes?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, just to echo with Gori about code enforcement, you know, last year, there was a house that was abandoned in my neighborhood, grass got kind of tall, and we had a fox that was in our backyard. And I have a dog that I let out, and I normally don't kind of look back there, I just happened to look that day, and I saw a fox just sitting in our backyard. That would have been a bad day for my dog. So just kind of keep your yard safe, and if there's something that is unoccupied and there's an issue, please call code enforcement, and we'll try to do the best that we can to get out there to just make the neighborhood safe in general for everybody. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
And your weeds go all the way to the outside of the curb, right?
Yep.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you. The official Memorial Day has passed us. Every day is Memorial Day for those who have given the ultimate sacrifice for our country and for our freedom. I did attend a couple of events. I attended the VFW 6461 Memorial Day events, and I really appreciate you for all of the work that you do in our community. I also attended the Pike's Peak National Cemetery to honor those who have given that sacrifice for us. I also attended the Fourth Infantry Division Fairway Retreat Ceremony in honor of Brigadier General Karim Monti, and they are hosting a welcome or fairway event for an incoming or outgoing leader as an important part of the Army and tradition and culture. It was a very good event. It wasn't somber. I learned a lot about the incoming and the outgoing officer, it was really nice. If you ever get, I know we have some Army people that are in the room, and those were really nice to have, to be able to go to. We're talking about our kids being out on the street. Just want to let you know that there is a free high school summer pass at Planet Fitness to promote youth health and wellness. So these kids ages 14 to 19, from June 1st to August 31st, they can work out for free. So Planet Fitness is an option for our kids to go this summer. That's all I have.
Okay, and in June, they can ride the bus for free up there, because don't we cross, do we still cross over into security there? It's pretty much right across the street from Planet Fitness. So, all right, they just got to walk to the bus route. And, well, they got to get their bus pass first, right? Go down to City Hall if you're under 18, and you have a free bus pass for the month of June, right? As long as you behave on the bus. All righty. And I went to the Pike's Peak Peace Officers Memorial Service, and last year, they did put Officer Becerra's name on the wall, but they did recognize him again this year, so that was really nice. Also went to a free screening of a fentanyl movie that I believe is available on YouTube. It was produced with no cost to the state or the county or anybody, it was produced privately. Michael Allen, our DA, is in there, and Chief Royball is in there. And so if you go to YouTube and you look for that fentanyl movie, it is absolutely astounding You just have to assume fentanyl's in anything if you don't get it out of a prescription bottle or out of a bottle from the pharmacy. And they are so good at stamping those pills, so we cannot stress that message enough, that it just takes one pill, one time. And so if you have a chance to watch that for some statistics, I would try to find it on YouTube. Went to the, also went to the Fort Carson Soldiers Memorial. They have that the Thursday before Memorial Day to recognize their soldiers who are lost in the, recently in years, and I'm glad to report again, there's no new names on that wall since 2017. So that's fantastic. And thank you again to the VFW and the Legion for the event on Memorial Day, really appreciate that. Your new floor is lovely. It's really nice, not yours, but kind of in general. Your new floor is lovely, and, because you guys have done a lot of work at the lovely, and, and, because you guys have done a lot of work at the Legion in the last few years, too. But the new floor is really nice. They have that polished concrete stuff, and it's gonna be a lot easier to take care of. And so thank you for that. And so that's it. And so that takes us on to public to be heard. And I do have some cards tonight, and I'll just take them in the order I received them. And I have the first card from John Langley, American Legion Post 38. Events and happenings.
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm gonna knock your podium over here. I'd just like to tell you a couple of the things that we have been doing at the Legion. One, we have, in the last month, we've gone to Mesa Ridge, Fountain Fort Carson, and to Whitefield High School, where we presented the military excellence and the scholastic excellence to the two highest cadets that were, are there. The auxiliary went, and, what, twelve, thirteen dozens of donuts in appreciation for the teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. So just wanted to let you know that some of the things that we've been doing. We also have sponsoring come up. We are, the auxiliary is sponsoring Five Girls to Girl State, and the Legion is sponsoring Four Boys to Boy State. It's a program that's a week long. It's up at, which town is it? Well, it's up north at a community college. But what it does is, one of the requirements that the service academies look for to see whether or not they've been actively engaged, and it's held at the same level as being an Eagle Scout. The auxiliary is kicking off a backpack collection drive starting on June the first, and it will go through 7/15 or July the 15th. They're partnering with Colorado Springs I Love You, and they collect and fill over 12,000 backpacks for local students of all ages. And distribution in this area will be on August 3rd at Grand Mountain Elementary. We have some dinners coming up. We have the Scouts that we support at our Legion. They are going to be doing a slopper dinner this Friday. The following week will be a spaghetti dinner that the Sons of the American Legion are doing. The auxiliary will have their famous chicken fried chicken on June the 14th. And then, just wanted to let you know that we will be having our Fallen Brothers and Sisters Ride, that our riders will be doing, which will be on June the 8th. And I want to thank everybody from the Council and you, Madam Mayor. Got your thank you card, thank you. But thank you for going to Post 6461 at the VFW and helping support your local VSOs. Thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you very much. All right, the next one is from Bobby V. Hill, VFW Post 6461.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. First, thank you for the compliments in regards to the, the new construction and stuff going on at the, the post. We did have a good turnout for the Friday event. Also on Friday, we did lay flags at the cemetery. The auxiliary laid flags at the cemetery in honor of Memorial Day. We had those there up until yesterday. Just, if anybody goes by and sees that their family members, maybe they had placed a flag there, we do, if we see a flag that's not in good rapport, we will replace that, take that one, take it back and retire it at the post, and place a flag generally with our tag on it that does say that we did that. So if people ask, "Hey, I had stuff," we try to take care of that as much as possible when we go by there. Thank you for, those of you that were able to attend, Madam Mayor, yourself, some of the council members that were there for Memorial Day. It was very nice to be able to do it with Post 38, American Legion. We are, kind of funny, we are at the post, I'm sorry.
Riders were very, very friendly.
It was nice. It was, gave you chills to see the color guard come in. We are actually doing slappers at the post also, at 6461's on Friday. So if you guys, just pick one, you'll, you'll have slappers. Good food at both. We are, we do have Friday dinners. Bingo is on Wednesday nights. I know you guys might not be able to attend. When I leave here, I'll be over there helping out. But it is at six o'clock on Wednesday nights. We are still working on our annual picnic. It will be August 10th. We're working on all the little particulars of that. We are planning for a Veterans Day Stand Down again, and have started getting some of the vendors for that, to include Sports Clips does free haircuts for anybody that comes down. So we'll probably be at the endpoint handing out flyers to let people know that they can come down there. I flipped one, too many pages, I apologize. Actually, I think that's about it. The best was just thank you, everybody, for your attendance. So, any questions?
Thank you. I think there was over a hundred people there Monday.
Yes.
I don't know if you kept hamburger patty count or anything, but there was a lot of people there.
They went through the first forty real quick, thanks to John and, and our commander cooking. So, but lots of good homemade food, and it was, it was nice. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Okay. The next person and the last card I have, and if you wanted to say anything, you didn't fill out a card, now's your time to get it up there, is Dan? I'm gonna kill your last name, Dan.
Klopotic?
That one. All right. Thank you. If you could just state your name for the record.
My name is Dan Klopotic. I live in Countryside. And I guess my thing I want to bring up is reference to, I wish to install a carport on my driveway, an eighteen and a half by twenty. The offset, I want to call it, is eighteen to twenty-five feet, which is over half of my front yard, of everybody's front yard in Countryside. This was done during the time of it, of the time back in the eighties. Okay, when cars were smaller, it also had an HOA back then, where cars were parked in the garage. That is no longer feasible at the, at this day and age. And the reason why I'm asking for it is I'm trying to protect my personal property. I'm not trying to put walls up on the side and make it a full, full garage or anything like that. I did get an estimate on it. It's by a reputable company. And I was here during the 2018 catastrophe that we all had. I lost every vehicle we owned. Okay? Luckily, you know, unfortunately, if, unless you have full coverage, you're not covered. This last year, the company was selling a car cover advertising that it was also protect you against hail. That, okay, and everybody knows, I think, the last year, last summer hailstorm we had, pea-sized hail. And I had that cover on my truck. My insurance paid $25,000 to repair it. That truck is an eighty-five to $90,000 truck. That's, that's, that's just not, you know, feasible for my insurance company to pay, you know, especially when we could save it and, and everything. The easement, like I said, is eighteen feet. I'm not asking for the full eighteen feet. I'm asking for a maximum of five feet variance, so I can put a twenty-five, or twenty, excuse me, a twenty-foot-long carport. Aesthetically pleasing, because I'm matching it to the side of my house. It's all stuccoed now, which when I bought it was plastic siding. Everything I've done to my house, I've tried to increase the value of it, and I believe a carport also would do that. I understand it, and I don't plan on having it look like some of the homes that I've seen in Security Whitefield and things like that, who make a third bedroom or a fourth bedroom, you know, or whatever that they want to do with it. That's county, that's not the city. Also, rules are different. I have pictures of what my truck looks like. It's a twenty-foot-long, you know, four-door pickup, you know, in future, because I plan on getting a fifth wheel. So I guess that's what I'm trying to, I'm not gonna be, we're not like everybody else. True, you're gonna have some people like that. They're gonna abuse, try to abuse the system. The point is, is everybody should come in who wants to do that, is gonna have to know the law, and then have to come and ask for a waiver, which I'm asking for, of five feet, because I just want a twenty-footer. I already have cars, you know, I have a classic car that I want to put in my, in my garage. My wife has her car. I already have another Trailblazer that was beat up by a hailstorm. I still drive. So, you know, that doesn't have to pertain being in an overhead cover. But I would like to protect my truck. And there's a lot of people that vehicles won't even fit in their garage. Case in point, my neighbor. I know of at least three to four other people just on my block that would love to have, or to have the opportunity to have a carport. If you need any pictures of what I was doing and trying to do, I measured it out. Like I said, if I put a carport up within the easement, it's a sixteen footer.
Okay, sir, it's his turn and his time, please.
And so, everybody's, everybody's, I'm just trying to put this into my words, everybody's city limits is different on their, than on the carports. I know, we have rules and regulations. And that's why I am trying to do it the legal way and the right way by coming to the City Council. When I was told that, of the easement.
Okay, if you, if I could get you to wrap it up, your five minutes is up.
Okay. And I guess that's all I have. It is gonna be anchored. It's all done by a professional company. And if you have any questions?
Okay. I know you have spoken with Todd, and I know you've talked, talked with staff when you came in, and I know you and I talked today.
Yes.
So, you know, you're familiar with what the regulations and things are. And, and I told you, I told you earlier that Council cannot grant, you know, just easements like that, that there's a process that it has to go through. So we can't, we cannot give you what you're asking for today, because if we start doing that, we'll have a hundred people in here every week wanting us to grant them this and grant them that. So that's why we have a process for it to go through, and that's a very, very large carport you're
It's a two-car carport.
To put up, right, I understand that. And so, so even any structure of that size is gonna have to go through, through the regional building process. Scott, did you want to address anything?
I would just say, I wanted to add on to that, Mr., is it Klopotic? Klopotic? Okay. Apologize if I hashed that. The Council actually can't legally even approve what you're asking. Their role as a legislative body is to pass the laws or amend the laws, to change laws, right? And then there is a quasi-judicial board, the Board of Adjustments, that can come together and discuss your specific request. That's the board who legally can do that. I think you might have talked to Mr. Evans about that, potentially?
I'm not sure.
Okay. 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 Well, we can follow up with you for sure on that. His request, he really has two options. Under our existing code, he can request the variance, which you're requesting, through the Board of Adjustment and go through that process. The Council's role, his other option would be if the Council decided they wanted to reopen the entire issue of carports and have those discussions and amend the code entirely. So that would be a whole different discussion. Those would be sort of two different paths to go down. Just to give you a heads up.
From what I'm understanding, the major problem is the easement. You know, that's the first thing, is the big thing right there, is because it's longer than.
Well, I understand, but, yeah. We're not gonna adjudicate it tonight, right?
No, I understand that.
And so I think the best process, you know, you've met with the various people you need to meet with. We spent over a year, pretty, pretty close to a year, maybe more than a year, discussing the carport issue. A lot of people didn't even want them in town. But, but the intent was, for those people, we just felt like there was people getting a lot of damage to their vehicles, to, to come up with some guidelines that would apply to everyone in the city fairly. And, and then the variance process after that. And so, you know, I, I know you're really frustrated right now. I would advise you to keep working with Mr. Evans and see how the process goes.
Who do I would need to see about what he was referencing to about changing these? You know, I guess that would be one of the first things to try to do.
If you want to go the variance route, Todd can help you through that process.
Okay.
If you were requesting the Council open up the, the whole item.
I agree with the rules and regulations that they've set up.
Then let's get, then your best bet then is to get with Todd.
Because there has to be boundaries. I, I have no qualm with that. But I do believe it's time to not reopen and hash out problems, but just to, you know, times have changed from when that easement was set up from today's.
So that would be the Board of Adjustment variance process.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Rick?
We got rid of the Board of Adjustment.
Right.
Well, it's your.
We have a hearing officer.
You're right.
I was gonna take care of it privately.
I'm still stuck in the, the mode of decades here.
Yeah.
You're right. It's, but it's the same process. We have a hearing officer.
It's the same process. There is an independent hearing officer that you can appeal to. He will listen to your appeal. He'll look at the, the law, and, you know, he, he can, that individual can make a determination. So.
It's the same thing.
That's, it's the same thing. It's just we, we, rather than have a board that's causing.
I'll think positive. What if he approves it, that we do that? Is there another?
Nope. That's it. If he approves it, that's it.
Well, then he would have to start his process with regional buildings, since it's so large, yeah.
Well, you're gonna, yeah, but as far as the city goes, that's all we do.
I mean, that's, yeah, I know, because it's over 200 square feet. I know I have to have a permit. Not a problem. I just want to know, what is the video process to go through?
I'll have, I'll have someone from planning reach out to you.
Gordon?
Okay, appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Madam Mayor, can I mention one other thing real quick?
Yes.
Charlie, would you raise your hand real quick? Charlie? This gentleman in the front, I wanted to highlight Charlie. He was a longtime city employee. I love seeing him here. He worked for years for the Streets Department, spent every single day out there in the street sweeper, making sure our streets were clean. And I love seeing him here, and so I just wanted to give him a quick shout out. Respect him a little bit while he's here. He was awesome employee.
All right. I don't have any other cards. And did you get any more in over there? No? Okay, all right. That takes us onto the next item, Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There are no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from Consent Agenda and considered separately at the discretion of Council. What would, can't we have Items A and B on the Consent Agenda? What would Council like to do? The City Clerk put her mic on. I was wondering if you needed to say something beforehand. Okay, that's why I was hesitating. Okay. Councilmember Estes?
Moved your approved Consent Agenda.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay. That takes us on to Item Eight, Old Business. There is none. Takes us on to Item Nine, New Business. Item Nine A, Consideration of Items Removed from the Consent Agenda. There were none. That takes us on to Item Nine B, Contingent Approval of Lease Agreement with Connections for Life for Use of a Portment Building. I am going to recuse myself from this item, and Mayor Protem Rick is going to run this item on the agenda. And the reason is, is I have been active in a lot of the conversations around this. And so I will be back as soon as their presentation is done. And Councilmember Rick handles the item. Would you like the?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Can wrap your knuckles down there. All right, thank you.
Item Nine B, Contingent Approval of a Lease Agreement with Connections for Life for Use of a Portment Center. Mr. Traynor?
Thank you. I apologize. I'm standing here at the public podium. It was the quickest one.
It's okay.
And I've got a visitor here from Connections for Life, who will be stepping up here shortly to go through a short presentation. This request is, as, as I believe the Council's aware, Karen Chair has been at that location for several, well, a couple of years now, has been doing a tremendous job. They made the choice that they needed to really complete their program in June of their program in June of this year, and so they are working on their exit strategy. They provided notice to us that they'll be leaving the Sunnyside Market location and really focusing on their primary, uh, role, which is just providing food to all these different facilities that provide these services. So, they've spent the last several months working with their various local partners to, to determine if there is a local partner that would be willing and able to take over the, um, sorry, that's blinking. Is it going to shut off on me? Okay, just making sure. Uh, if they had a partner that was willing to take over the service for them, Connections for Life, that's a longtime organization here in the Fountain Valley area, um, is stepping up to do that. They'll be, uh, well, they've been working on everything that they need to do to, to move into that slot, and I believe will be heading in in June. Is that right? Okay, wonderful. Um, and so what you have before you is a, uh, real simple lease agreement for the property that we have with Connections for Life, and we're hoping to sort of seamlessly move them in as Karen Share moves out. Any questions for me?
Any questions from the council?
Okay. Then I have Mr. Lewis, Darrell Lewis. He is here with Connections for Life, and he's got a really brief, uh, presentation to go through. I want to make sure that everyone understands a little bit about who Connections for Life is. Thank you, Darrell.
All righty, thanks, Scott. I'm Darrell Lewis from Connections for Life. Thank you, council, uh, city members and the community. Um, basically, this slide is addressing Fountain Security on Foods. Uh, and we'll just kind of go through who we are, our history, uh, I think you guys got to read ahead. So, we are a nonprofit. Uh, we're located on 8580, uh, down there where the old Kmart was, for those who've been in around, and we're volunteer-based. Uh, we have one part-time ops manager, and the only reason why we implemented that is because in order to get grants, you got to pay someone. Uh, so we ended up doing that a couple of years ago, and we've had some grants. We're funded by local churches, communities, businesses, and, uh, we do occasionally, like I said, get a grant. Uh, and we are a partnered, uh, with Karen Share and have been for quite some time. Uh, our history is over 25 years in this community. Uh, it started out with serving women, uh, in, uh, who were single, five moms, and it has grown. We have moved three times, and we have not shut down. Uh, and during the, uh, the 2020, uh, period of our life, we stayed open. We adjusted our operations. The need was high, and you'll see a slide coming up about the food, how we were blessed to meet the need, uh, uh, for what happened during that 2020 era. All righty, um, and we have no plans of going away. Uh, so our, our vision statement is to promote an environment for people, uh, to change their community and by serving and meeting critical needs. Today, we had a workday. We had two people who were drug addicts, who are clean, committed, have done their community service, and continue to volunteer. We have two youth today. One going through a tough time, and the other one is court-directed, and we're there to walk along them. We're on a journey, and we treat people with dignity. Uh, and so what we do is we connect people with people. Uh, we connect people with support organizations. We have all sorts of referrals. People don't wake up and say, "I want to go into a food bank today." Some people lose their jobs, even when the federal money shuts down, that rocks in people's world. And so, we have the resources, the referrals, uh, to point people because it's something new. Uh, and then we also connect organizational services together so we can team, uh, in meeting the needs of our community. Okay, so that kind of gives you a highlight. I'm not going to go through everything. I'll just kind of overview it. We, uh, we have three different food programs. Uh, we give out Thanksgiving meals, Christmas meals, occasionally an Easter meal. Uh, and if you look down there, I was told in about 2020, we did 411,000 pounds of food, uh, that year, which was just awesome. And so, we have, uh, a lot of, a lot of food that goes through, and if we can't use it, we give it to the other small church pantries, other different people. And, uh, we don't waste anything, and now we're, we're partnering with local farmers, uh, for pigs and chickens and all that stuff. So, we don't want to put anything in the garbage. Um, so we have the Whitefield Transition Program. We have Roundup. Uh, and then, like I said, we have the, the courts, adults and, uh, and, and juveniles, and we do community outreach. Unfortunately, this move, we are going to lose our thrift store. Our clients used to be able to get three free clothing items per person per month, but we are going to keep the essentials, uh, uh, the socks, uh, hygiene items, stuff like that for, uh, for the, the transient people and the people who just don't have money to provide that. Uh, so the challenge, like Scott said, is Karen Share is changing. Uh, change doesn't go well. Uh, it's been kind of, kind of tough, and we've been working with the city, and we've been working with Karen Share. We've had our face there, so they know that we don't plan on changing a whole lot. Uh, are the way we get sourced food's different, so that may be different to them, but we are there. Um, when we started, and the reason why the mayor, uh, she was a part of the community effort to see who was going to fit and fill this need. Nobody was big enough and had the aspiration to do it. And when we came down the first time to the Walt Fortman Building and we saw the clients walking, most of our clients can drive. Our homeless clients, they find a way to get to us. But we knew that we had to step in, and that is the challenge that we're going to meet. We are going to continue operations down there. Uh, and so, uh, that's just some, some technical stuff, uh, there. Um, I kind of get right ahead of myself. Um, and so that's basically where we're at. We are looking to partner with the city, and we know it's not the responsibility of the city to feed, uh, the people, but we know that, uh, homelessness, uh, is an issue. Uh, and we work as hard as we can when we bring our, our clients in to make sure they don't go homeless. Because we tell them, you go homeless, it's four times as expensive to get back into a home. And so, that's kind of a part of our goal, too, is we do that. Uh, and so that's kind of what we're asking for is, uh, permission, uh, to continue serving what we do and have done and will do. Um, this is a little bit of the change, just kind of an eye chart of hours. Uh, we've already noticed that we've already had about 53 clients signed up from the Sunnyside Market at Walt Fortman or our current clients right now. Uh, so we do know there's going to be a, uh, an increase. Uh, and so we are going to continue to, uh, keep the, having a senior day, uh, which that's what the seniors like. That way, they can come in, do their thing, and then we're going to do that with the, uh, the, the government programs to supplement the food on that senior day for them. And then the, uh, non-senior people for government commodities, we're going to, we're going to have to use the basement, uh, um, to, to, to make that happen. Any questions, uh, from the council?
Any questions for any of the council members? Uh, Councilmember Hersberg.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to get clarification. So, are you going to be operating both locations, or you're closing the one and, and just doing the new?
All right. So, so we are going to be closing the 85 on the one, the old Kmart. Uh, it was getting to be cost-inhibited to us to maintain that lease, being a, a nonprofit, and, uh, that lease was, we knew that we had to make a move, and so this opportunity, the timing is great, so.
Okay. And I had opportunity to tour your current facility, and you guys do great work. Um, so I'm glad. I hope this works out. So, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Duncan?
Thanks. Thank you for all you do for our community. I did, uh, come there when you were open during COVID, and I appreciate that. Uh, a lot of people, just because it's COVID, doesn't mean that they were able to get food, so I do appreciate that. Um, I was wanting to know about the senior boxes. What is the age of a senior? I mean, some people are young at heart, so what is the age?
Um, I'm not too sure. I believe it is 60 years of age, I think, is how the, that's a state-sponsored program, uh, and I believe it's 60 and over to get a senior box.
Okay. And I guess, Scott, the, the location that we have for bus transit, because he was saying that people were walking, and I do see a lot of people walking with their, their, uh, mobile carts, um, to that location, um, is the closest bus route we have is to the park where they can, yes?
That's right.
Okay, so there is, we have a, um, a bus drop location in the park that's not that far from the location that people can walk to, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilmember Hinton?
Yes, so with the, uh, Karen Share that was there, um, I believe the people that kind of went through that was that dignity and respect, will you be able to offer that same services that Karen Share came through, just people just being able to go through and shop and get their food and, and not feel like it's, it's a handout, but it's a hand up to be able, just to be, be human, uh, in that aspect. Um, can you just kind of address how that will kind of work with the services that you guys will provide?
Right, yeah. So, when we, when we, we treat people equal, we, no matter, well, you know, even in our faith base, we don't limit, you know what I mean? Who, you know what I mean? What religions? We don't care about that. We care about meeting the need. That's what we're there for. And we do that, and our outreach now is, we had started out, uh, with boxes. That's, that's very ineffective because if people have allergies, they can't eat the food, and if they don't like the food, it goes in the trash. So, we have had the same concept. For those who've been there, you shop for your food. You come through, you get to pick out, paying on family size. That's one thing that we're going to do a little bit different. Uh, Karen Share currently now does like two bags. We realize a large family cannot deal on two bags, two little, small grocery bags for a week for a family. So, we will up the, the quantity of food for the medium-sized family, which is six and above, uh, I think it's four, five, and six, and then our large families. So, we plan on doing that. So, we trying to get some carts purchased, uh, to allow that because they will get food. Uh, and so, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of our clients, we know them, you know what I mean? Uh, and we, 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 we go through the struggles they go through, you know what I mean? Whether someone's sick, someone died, even if their pet has died. We are there. We're, we're community. And so, uh, uh, when we went there our first time, we got lots of hugs, you know what I mean? People who don't know us, they're a little concerned, but there is, from our perspective, where it won't be any change in service, uh, when we move in there.
I appreciate you, and, uh, I know sometimes it's a thankless job, but thank you for everything that you do and thank you for what you're doing, about to do for this community and the city of Florence. I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Any other city council members? City clerk, your, your light's on. Did you have something?
I don't know.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone from the public who has questions, comments, and concerns? Please come up to the podium. Okay, seeing none. IT, do we have anybody online that's indicated anything? Nope. Okay. Uh, since we've gone through everything, what would city council like to do with this request? Councilmember Duncan?
I guess if I find the page.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, I, I'm going to read the, uh, recommended proposed motion, move to approve the lease agreement with Connections for Life contingent upon final termination of the lease with Karen Share and successful resolution of any outstanding tenant issues.
Okay, councilmember Hinton?
I second.
We have, um. Someone could invite the mayor back in? There she is.
All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and just for the record, I'd like to make it very clear. I had nothing to do with the lease. That was totally with the city. I was not involved in that at all. And, um, but I was involved in several of the conversations and the meetings, and so that's why I didn't want to have any undue influence on anything to do with this because I wanted to make sure it was above board and everything. Uh, what do we charge them, Scott? A whopping dollar a year or something?
Dollar a year.
Dollar a year. All right. If anybody, if anybody would like to sponsor that, you know, 10 cents a month or something, you know, please feel free. All righty, and welcome. And, uh, again, and again, for the record, uh, the choice of Karen Share to leave, uh, was they are redoing their business model. Um, and the city did not ask them to leave. We would have been totally happy if Karen Share's business model had, had stayed the way it was, and they would be able to stay. But, uh, when it became obvious that wasn't going to, um, to happen, um, we, Scott and I, uh, worked with them to get every, every nonprofit we could in the Fountain Valley area, uh, to, to get to that meeting and see what was, what the plan was to continue. So, thank you. I'm really excited that, that we're able to continue to have that provided. All righty. And I did make it really clear to them that they knew, do need to, uh, keep the Walt Fortman name in, in whatever it is, so Connections for Life at Walt Fortman or whatever they do, because that's really important to the community, too. And that takes us on to item C, Resolution 24-020, Resolution Approving the 2025 Strategic Plan Vision Statement and Strategic Priorities. Mr. Trilch, can you really do it in 15 minutes? Because I want to take a break before the long item.
I can do it faster than that, for sure.
Okay.
For sure. So, uh, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, and for those who, who don't know me or may be listening online, I'm John Trilch. I'm the city's administrative services director and, uh, also the city's, uh, strategy manager. So, we're here this evening to, uh, discuss and ask for council's approval on a big step in our strategic planning process. If you look at the slide up there, uh, you can see that that's kind of our four-step process and our, our one-year strategic planning model. Uh, this is to renew and, uh, and, um, establish a new strategic plan for the city for years 2025 to 2027. So, right there in the center, you see that big green star. That's where we are this evening. So, we have embarked on a process over the past several months to work through and review, uh, the city's vision statement and to develop and select, uh, the city's strategic priorities, which is the council's, uh, strategic policy guidance to staff in the city, um, that would then help facilitate the rest of the development of the strategic plan. Bezzie, could you have the next slide for me? Okay, just to review quickly, uh, kind of how we got to this evening. Uh, we had a vision statement discussion at a city council meeting back in February. Uh, that's where council provided the guidance to develop a summarized vision statement. And, uh, so we developed that and presented that then in March, when we can, also conducted a review, the first phase of our strategic planning process. Then we came back together, um, later on, it actually was in April, the, to select the focus areas, the strategic priorities for the strategic plan, which we're going to discuss a little bit more this evening. So, okay, here in front of you and what you saw, um, in those different meetings, it was the developed summarized vision statement that council approved during that review session. So, it's just, this is just, uh, to review that language there. Uh, we also summarized the enduring interests, those five items there, which are a component of the overall, overall vision of the city. So, all of that there, council you're seeing is just review. Uh, you've all discussed that before, and so it's just for, uh, just to put it up there again one last time. Okay, and then finally, uh, the big thing for this evening, uh, this is the final draft, uh, strategic priorities for the strategic plan 2025 to 2027. So, this was developed during the, uh, the strategy session that we did in April, where you chose the, the focus areas, and then through, uh, various rounds of, of individual meetings, uh, this language was drafted and proposed. And, uh, you were all sent this, um, uh, to, to review. So, again, it's just up here for, uh, everyone to see in the public setting, uh, for a matter of review. So, uh, this, though, that, uh, that priority language and vision statement is what is contained in the resolution that I ask you to pass tonight. The purpose of the resolution is for you to officially adopt the city's vision statement and the strategic priorities, and so we can move forward with the next step in the planning process. So, that's all I have, um, subject to any wants, questions. I, I recommend that you approve the resolution and adopt the vision statement and the strategic priorities.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from any council members? Okay, I don't see any. Are there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience tonight? Because this is our city plan. This is our citizens' plan, right? So, if anybody has any questions tonight, please come to the microphone and state your name for the record. Okay, anyone online? All right. Okay, let's keep moving forward then.
So, I'd recommend, uh, a motion, mayor, to pass.
Okay, I just didn't know if you had anything else to say, so.
No, that's it. I said, way better than 15 minutes.
All righty. Okay, what would council like to do with, uh, item nine C? And I don't, I don't, can I get my screen back here? And I don't I don't, can I get my screen back here so I can see who's? Thank you. Councilmember Hersberg.
Thank you, mayor. I move to approve Resolution number 24 dash zero two one.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Okay. I'm sorry? Okay, we have a question. Someone think the motion is Resolution 24 dash zero two zero? What did I'm sorry, what do you? Give me a moment just to clarify. Okay, councilmember Estes believes she heard you say 21, so if we can just go ahead and restate that just to be clear clear. That's okay. Thank you for catching that.
So so it should be 24 zero two zero?
Yes.
Okay.
If you could just restate the motion.
I move to approve Resolution 24 zero two zero. Thank you, and a second?
I second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Seven, yes, motion carried.
Thank you, mayor. So that now constitutes your official policy guidance to city staff, and the next step will staff will get together and begin developing those action items, the strategic objectives to support your guidance. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All righty. And that takes us on to item nine D. And and then we'll take our break after item nine D. Resolution number 24 dash zero two one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fountain, Colorado, authorizing the leasing of public safety vehicles through Holman Capital and acquired with fiscal year FY 2024 budgeted funds and to reimburse the city with the lease proceeds. Ms. Dale?
Good evening, mayor and city council. So back in September of 2023, we asked the city council to approve the ordering and the purchasing of some new police vehicles and some new fire vehicles because of the long leave times on these orders for these vehicles. And we are finally to the point now where we have taken delivery of one of the fire vehicles and a couple of the police vehicles, with the rest to be estimated to be delivered in July and August of this year. So with that, we would like to move forward with the actual lease agreement for this. And the total lease is going to be approximately $820,000 for all of the vehicles combined. And it's going to be a five year lease agreement through Holman Capital, which we have a master lease agreement that we signed in January of 2023 with them. So it'll be an annual lease payment of $184,000 beginning in June of this year. And so therefore, with that, the staff is recommending the approval of this lease and to reimburse the city for the funds already spent on the vehicles that we already have taken delivery of with the lease proceeds. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions from council?
Okay, any questions? Councilmember Applegate?
I had a couple of questions. So in like future dates, say if there was future dates, would we open up this bid to other people besides Holman? And I guess I kind of like a second question on that. Is anybody else besides Holman even like really truly in this business to like lease to a city?
There are other lease options outside of Holman. However, because of the master lease agreement that we have with Holman that we signed in 2023, they do actually give us the best interest rate currently. So that's why we did not go out for bid on this lease agreement.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Of course.
Thank you. That is a great rate. Yeah, anything else right now is is up in the high sevens and eights?
Correct.
Yeah, I've been out in the market recently, so I saw that rate and I'm like, I want that rate.
Which is actually a really beneficial move on city council's part to approve that master lease agreement in January of last year, just so we could secure significantly lower interest rates.
Right, thank you. Well, thank you for bringing that recommendation.
Of course.
Thank you. All right, what would council or is there any questions from anyone in the audience regarding this lease? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Hersberg?
I have to redeem myself.
We all have done it.
I move to approve Resolution 24 zero two one.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Councilmember Rick?
Move to second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further deliberation? Seeing none? Please vote. Seven, yes, motion carried. All right, it is 7:22. We are going to take a 10 minute break for everybody to stretch before we get into this next item that's estimated to be at least an hour. And so that'll bring us back at 7:32. Turning the city council meeting back to order, and we will go on to item nine E, discussion of the 2025-26 budget priority overview. And we're starting with Scott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we need to wait a minute? Or are we good?
She's she's walking in.
Oh, okay, great. Just checking.
Tamra? Where's? Oh, okay. Shawna, could you go? Our teacher's going to grab her. Okay, all righty. Okay, let's go ahead and get started.
Go ahead, okay. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Just want to, I'm going to give a little bit of a backdrop for this, then I'll hand it over to Shawna for some more information and share some more information to the council. Tonight, the council spent a little bit of time on the strategic plan priorities. You spend a lot of a lot more time prior to tonight, I know, but adopting those strategic priorities, this is the first time that that we've been able to align the adoption of the strategic priorities with the initial sort of brainstorming discussion around the budget. And I think that's really an important step to recognize and to take because if you think about it, what will happen next with your strategic priorities, that is going to give us direction as a city staff to start developing objectives around each of those priorities. Well, what better way to do that than to start stepping into the budget as we're developing the budget and thinking to ourselves, okay, what is the council indicated they want? Let's start developing a budget around that. The council get another look at that. They'll get you got you all get a chance to look at those objectives and and give us an idea of what you like, what you don't like, what you want to change. But in the meantime, we can start developing a budget around that. That to me, that kind of alignment's really important. The most important tool that a council that any council has to affect your policy is the budget. And so as important as the strategic plan is, and we spend a lot of time talking about that, as important as all the codes and everything else are, the the budget itself is the tool that actually enacts your will. And so the strategic plan without the budget is really just really nice words and comments on paper, but this budget is your opportunity to sort of put your money where your mouth is, so to speak. And so I just wanted to kind of give a little bit of context to that because I think it's just an important thing to think about. Tonight's meeting is really designed as a open flow of information from the council to the staff to let us know as you've been thinking about this upcoming budget, maybe through conversations you've had, maybe through things you've seen in the community, like conversations you've had with citizens or each other, things that things that you recognize are needs in the community. It's your chance to let us know, hey, staff, as you develop the budget, be thinking about this. I'm thinking about this as a council member, I want you to be thinking about this, too. And as you develop that, come back with something that addresses X, Y or Z, right? Of course, we're going to be focused on the strategic priorities, but also recognize that there are a number of things in the budget that don't really tie to the strategic priorities. They tie to just conducting everyday business. I mean, we're talking about, you know, gas for the police cars. Ammu, oh, our police folks are gone. Ammunition for the for the for the police, you know, those sorts of things, those are the kind of things we're going to be budgeting anyway. But there may also be something in between. There may be those items that you feel are part of the strategic plan, or there may be other issues that fall off that don't necessarily align perfectly with that. They may have some connection to that, and that's okay, too, to give us some direction on that. We're going to take that information tonight, we're going to be making notes, and then we'll start using that, your comments, to start developing that budget so that when we come back to you, we'll have a list of, hey, these are the things that you had all had mentioned to us, and here's how we've tried to incorporate that into the budget. Does that make sense? I know I know that's something that many of you have done before, but I just wanted to make sure I reiterate that for those who maybe haven't, and also for our community who may be interested in how this process works. Tonight's a really a more casual discussion about what's important to you and and just to let us know. So with that, Shawna has, one of the things we always try to start off this communication with, this part of the conversation with, is a little bit of a highlight of our fund balance and our budget. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Shawna, and she's going to run with that.
Thank you, Scott. So good evening again, council, mayor. So this is really the only slide that I have for you tonight with data on it. And this is the general fund fund balance as of the unaudited numbers for 2023, which we are finalizing right now with our auditor. So hopefully, we'll have that report back in the next few weeks. And then the 2024 projected fund balance based on the 2024 budget that you all approved in December of last year. So one of the things I'd like to highlight on this is the very far right column, which is the 2024 which is the 2024 projected fund balance. And you'll see the breakout of all of the different types of fund balances that we have. That second line there, the restricted for public safety, those are the funds from the property tax, the 2B ballot measure that are restricted for, from that, that ballot initiative. And that is actually after all of the, the revenue that we should, we're estimated to bring in this year and then all of the already approved expenditures from those funds. So that would be what is left at the end of '24, estimated at this point. And the other ones are the committed fund balances for park improvements and the school zones. And then, thank you, Scott. And then the assigned to public safety, that 2.7 million over there on the far right, about middle of the way down, that is the public safety fund balance from the sales tax increment that took effect in 2012. The unassigned fund balance, of course, is what everybody likes to see is the 11.8 million that's up there, which right now, the unassigned and the Tabor reserve is estimated to be 41.9, almost 42% of the operating expenditures for 2024. So with a 20% operating reserve that we are required to keep per financial policy, including the 3% Tabor reserve, that's 6.1, which leaves about 6.7 million in unassigned excess over the 20% required reserve. So that's a number that council always likes to have on hand and that's normally for the one-time big expenditures versus a continuing expenditure. And at the very bottom, you'll see about 7.3 million in the ARPA, which is restricted. That is not included in any of those figures above and hopefully by the end of 2024, that will be down to almost zero because the majority of those funds are going to the water infrastructure project already. Okay? Mayor?
I have a question about the ARPA funds because I was reading an article that the joint budget committee was getting together over the summer and any ARPA funds that are not spent by a certain time, they're going to be recalling them back.
That is correct. However, as long as we have a plan and they have already been allocated by the end of 2024, by December 31st of this year, and we report that, then we are okay to spend those. I believe it's out through 2020 sticks. So as long as we spend, as long as we have it allocated by the end of this year.
Right. And I know it's been like that, but this article gave me the, it inferred there might be a different idea coming down the pike, so we just want to be really careful and be on top of that.
And I can look, I can look into that. The last, about three weeks ago, I did a webinar on the ARPA funding and the reporting and they reiterated back that it was as long as we have it allocated by the end of this year, we are free to spend it through 2026. So, but I'll definitely look into that to make sure nothing's changed since then. Okay? Bezzie, if you could go to the next slide, please. And actually, real quick, Bezzie, go back one for me. Sorry. I just wanted to let you know too, that these 2024 projected fund balance numbers do already take into account the approved methods that council approved earlier this year to help stabilize the water fund. So those are already accounted for in these numbers as well. Bezzie, if you could. So just as you consider, now that Mr. Chilch has gone through all the strategic priorities that you all have approved, these are, of course, the city departments and services that need to have consideration as you think about the budget and with the strategic priorities. So with that, I would like to open it up to you all for discussion to provide direction to city staff and to finance as to what we should be looking for as we start meeting with our department heads in preparation of their budget for the 25, 26 fiscal years.
Councilmember Rick?
Can you go back one slide, please?
Of course.
Park improvements. Why did we go from 490,000 in 2022 to 1.1 million in 2023?
That was the one-time development fees that we received from the Watermark Apartments, from the Garrison Apartments.
Okay.
And that was $620,000 and that was a significant increase to the park improvement fund balance.
Okay. That answers my question.
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, while we're on this, can I mention one of the, I just want to kind of highlight one thing that Shawna said here that I think is really important for the discussion. I'm going to use this laser pointer down here to highlight it. She mentioned the overall fund balance that, that's unassigned and the Tabor reserve that the council has. That's a number that the council has really, the 20% figure right here, the 20% of operating revenues right there, that's 6.1 million, that's a number that the council has identified as a number that you feel is important to try to keep in our fund balance so that if something were to happen, we have some funds to deal with it, right? The number right under that, that 6.7 million, that's a number that the council has typically used in the past as a planning figure that you can look at and as you're exploring different needs of the community, those are dollars that you typically would look at and go, hey, you know, we're looking at this road project.
Excuse me one moment. Mr. Hersberg, Mr. Hers, that's a good one. Goodness. Councilmember Hinton just received a text that this is not being broadcast. Is there a way we can?
Yeah. YouTube.
Could you unmute, please?
It's live on YouTube currently.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay, let's keep moving while they figure that. I've had YouTube quit doing that before in like county commissioner meetings and you have to like close it and reboot it. Okay.
So I will say that I have another person I just verified with, it is broadcasting.
Okay. All right.
So I just wanted to share that real quick.
That's okay. It doesn't hurt to take a second and we'll check it. So, all right. Thank you. Sorry to stop the flow.
No, no, no problem at all. I just want to highlight that 6.7 million. So as you look at park projects, road projects, whatever those priorities are for the council, just recognize those are some funds that you have above and beyond that 20% base that you're trying to set aside. And then that sec, that next page that Shawna had mentioned, that was really one we just put together to remind you of all the different services that are out there. Because I know sometimes when we're thinking of, you know, what's important, we kind of, it's easy to forget some of the services we provide, so that was just really more of a memory jogger than anything.
Okay, so this is where you pull out your four strategic priorities that we just passed, right? And you, and you look at them. If you don't have them, number one, and these, I'm just going to say number one, number two. There are in no order of priority, right? And one is not more important. But the first one on this page is strengthen public communication efforts, improve transportation infrastructure, support local business development, and enhance water and electric security. Just real quick, Scott, those are really big, broad priorities, but there are some departments, I think, that some of them focus on. Do you think those departments are going to be in need of some additional one-time purchases or services or anything to?
So are you talking about the departments that will be directly or indirectly tied to the priorities? Yeah. Yeah, depending on what the, what we develop as objectives and what the council gives us direction on, that'll help direct us on where, where do we need to focus our efforts. So it's sort of hard, right now it's like the chicken or the egg, which one comes first. But really the idea, the hope from us is we can get a sense from you of what you're really keyed in on. For example, communications, that's one that I can see us really trying to step up our communications game in virtually every aspect of what we do. That can be as simple as, well, that's, I don't want to call it simple, but updating our website, which actually isn't simple, but it is going to be quite a process. Two, making sure that we have very strong communications components in everyone, that are associated with every one of the other objectives, right? So it's hard to say right now without knowing exactly where the council was supposed to focus, but once we get a sense from the council and we start working objectives, then we'll come back to you. We'll say, hey, what do you think about these? Here's some dollars associated with that and go from there. Does that make sense? It's just, it's really hard to give an exact number on that.
Okay. Count, I'm not sure. Councilmember Rick?
So Scott, going back to your statement about the reserves, we've got 20% and we got another 6.7, 6.8, whatever it is. We've been hem-hawing around with the intersection at Ohio and Jimmy Camp now for several years, you know? And the previous guidance we've given you is, once Indiana gets done, we'll see if we got some money and go ahead and make that a lighted intersection, okay? And the last time I remembered, it was only a couple hundred thousand to do that intersection. I would rather us, rather than wait for all the bills to come in and then figure out if we have enough money because that's going to be like September. I would ask that we go ahead and consider doing that now during the summer so that when school starts, that lighted intersection is there and we can start from the get-go. Because that intersection, in my opinion, has been a, a mess for years and we really need to get something done on it. If we've got that much extra money, I would ask council to consider doing that this summer so it's ready for the school year rather than wait for later.
Yeah. I understand and I agree with what you're saying. There was some issue though with one of the property corners. Is that in one of the property owners not wanting to sell? Or, or being involved in some personal issues that it was kind of slowing it down or?
I believe those have been addressed. The personal issues have been addressed. So now they just need to complete the acquisition of the right-of-way. And then, yeah, like councilmember Rick said, they were waiting for the completion of this other property or project to see how much funding we had left. So I think if we had direction that that was important to the council, that would be the kind of thing we plug in. And, you know, if you're hoping to have that, I just got to think of this out loud. Remember, this is for the '25 budget and so if that actually is something that's important to the council sooner rather than later, that's something, that's still a good message for us to carry forward to the transportation folks so that they can see what's actually doable within this summer timeframe. Because they've done a lot of the legwork already and that may be doable. So it may actually be something that's possible to do prior to the budget.
Is that a Spanlight intersection?
Yes, yeah.
So we don't have to wait for a poll or anything to get here?
Really similar to the one that was up at CNS.
Okay. Is the engineering done?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah. Scott, can you just remind people the amount that we have? Even though the reserve looks large, but we have to keep a certain amount for, in the reserve according to federal regulation. Can you just remind people that, that state, excuse me, state regulation? What does that look like? Because we get questions like, oh, the, the city has all this money and reserve and we have to keep a certain amount. Just correct me if I'm wrong.
We do have to keep 3% per Tabor, which on that chart up there, that's actually the top number up in the top right corner, that restricted for emergencies Tabor. So for 2023, we're looking at 1.1 million and it'll drop a little bit just based on expenditures because it's 3% of the operating expenditures, not including debt service and capital. So that number is actually already included in that 20% operating expenditures because city council's financial policy says the 20% includes that 3%.
That's just good for the public to kind of get reminded of. That's the reason why we have to have that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So a few years ago, a couple of years ago, the previous council that was seated at that time, at my request, we set aside about $500,000 to, just to keep on tap to see if we could attract anybody who would be interested in potentially putting a pool or a recreation facility down here in Fountain. We've met extensively with YMCA and other nonprofits to see if they had any interest and it was just kind of going to be seed money, right? And, or maybe if a grant came along or something that wanted to see that we were serious about it. And, and I don't see that coming into fulfillment. So I do know that was sitting there line itemed in the budget. I think that would, a good use of that, at this point, would be that intersection be, I think especially since the school district put that huge
Arena.
Arena, sports complex, whatever they're calling it over there. I'm sure the traffic in the, you know, is going to increase. It used to be they had a couple of events a year that we had traffic issues over there, but, but I'm sure when that gets fully going in this next school year and the one after that, the traffic is going to be greatly increased over there.
We don't need to wait, Mayor. Graduation was a nightmare. Just, just so you know.
It's a nightmare every year, yeah. Even without that, yeah, but, yeah, it is. But, but I'm, there's going to be more because I think they're trying, I mean, the whole reason of building it, right, was to attract a lot more regional events and things like that going on, so. So do you need a motion to that? Or it's, it's nothing that's on the agenda?
If I get a sense, or if we get a sense that there's consensus with these various things, we're just making notes and we're going to be plugging forward.
I, I would like to see you come back with the cost, the estimated cost of that at this moment and see what that would be.
And a timeline.
And a timeline. Yeah, because I know Streets already has everything laid out for the summer and.
And it would be a different kind of contractor that'd be working on that project, so we'll follow up on that for sure.
Right. Okay. All right. Okay. So back to the 2025 budget. Thank you for bringing that up. So, so we have these things. So in, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing the communications department is potentially going to need some extra funding for however we decide to do communication. I'm sure there's things that would need to be purchased for that potentially.
Yes, Mayor. And like when we were discussing the priorities relative to communications for years, you know, we've, we've really taken the, you know, cheap or free approach to city communications. So using Facebook, you know, using social media, putting out, you know, media releases and hoping to get some attention from the established media organizations. And so we have really not committed a lot of resources to communications. So here, this is an opportunity if council, so, you know, desires to, in an effort to strengthen communications, to really say, hey, go out and let's investigate some other tools and resources that are available. Just get some cost estimates on that and like what would it cost to, for instance, do, you know, paid public service announcements utilizing, you know, established media that's in the area and kind of we can price that out. We could look at some other communications resources, radio, newspaper, really, you know, leaning in. We know doing newspaper ads with our local paper now being gone, you know, the Gazette is actually, is quite expensive to, to put things in the Gazette, but we can go ahead and at your, if, you know, you want to provide that direction, we can go and kind of price a bunch of that stuff out and, and then provide that to you as a potential budget item to consider to support that priority.
I just, communication is just vital to a community. I, yeah.
Yeah, and it would, I would also suggest talking with IT if there's any software needs or anything to increase our capabilities.
Okay. Okay.
The other thing, I'm sorry.
No, I don't know who was first because I did.
She can go first.
Okay. All right.
When they say fleet, does that mean that he's asking, I know fleet and streets are, are connected, right?
Well, are you talking about fleet up here on the, on the slide? So that's just our fleet department and that's an internal service department. That, those are all the mechanics that maintain our, our fleet. So Streets and Fleet work very closely together, but they're not intermingled in any way.
Yeah, I, I know that he has requested a lot of equipment that we don't have and to make our streets more drivable when, when there are snowstorms or whatever. So I would like to see that they get equipment that they need.
For streets or for fleets?
For fleet. Or both. I don't know.
Well, because the fleet equipment that they would need would be equipment to work on our city fleet for every department versus if you're talking just equipment to maintain the roads, that would be capital equipment then for the actual Streets Department.
Do we have a list of what they need?
He does.
I know, I know that Mr. McDonald does, but I don't have that.
If that's something that's important to the council, then what we'll do is we'll make sure Bob understands it. He's, I mean, he's talked, I know he's talked about the paper before, I mean, paving equipment. So, okay.
Yeah. I, I think we need to give him the equipment he needs. I mean, I don't know.
No, yeah. Go ahead, Rick. John, to go along with your point about we're paying a lot of money to the Gazette to run ads for us that are required under our city ordinances. If we could look at finding alternatives to that, because I'm not sure how many Gazette papers are getting delivered here in Fountain. I'm not sure. Yeah.
And the independents back.
The issue is that our city charter states that it must be run in a printed newspaper with local distribution.
Yeah, that, that is correct for those required public notices, but aside from those, like city communications, we really don't use the Gazette for any purchased public service announcements. It's just too, or at the moment, it's just been too expensive. So.
Can we look at other, for example, the Independent? Have we talked to them about what their rates are?
We haven't, but we. We haven't, but we, we can. I mean, so, you know, with this priority, myself and Sam, we're going to go out and we're going to talk to all of the established local news networks. We're going to talk to all the radio stations. We'll talk to all the newspapers and we'll kind of price out what it would take to be able to put content, you know, use their, their resources to really broadcast content out and provide that, that information back to you.
In the, in the past, Independent hasn't done legals, but you know what they're all on, they're rewriting themselves.
Maybe, yeah. We have not much.
I'm not sure who was next.
We haven't done much with the Indy.
Councilmember Husburg?
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification. So in, in, you know, in the packet, we had the fiscal resource growth framework. And so I was going through all of that and a number of line items are marked for 2025. And so I just didn't know, are those already included in what you guys have done? Because unfortunately, Shawna wasn't really familiar with this document yet because what I was asking in this document was a summary of in 2025, based on, there's a lot of information in here, based on this information, in 2025, we expect we need this much. Because the department heads have taken the time to go through and say, I need this. And, and they've projected this out like to 2027, it's valuable. So I would say that we need to pay attention to the, to this as well. You know what I'm saying? I don't know, unless I'm way off target here.
No, I actually had that same question too, so.
I think that's a great question. Let me jump in and, and give that a little bit of context. That framework was the brainchild. It was the, the concept around that was when we were really feeling these growth pains and we were looking down the future, where you're looking at the, the past growth that we've been experiencing and trying to project forward into the future what our growth might be, we started getting worried like, hey, wait a minute, do we have a good enough idea in our crystal ball of what those impacts are on our services and our facilities and our personnel and just everything, right? Equipment. And so we began down this path of trying to project forward based on our path growth. Well, as the council knows, as the world knows, everything changed when we, after we began that. And so we saw the growth flatten out. We saw, following that, we started having the water discussions and the water limitations that hadn't been part of those discussions early on. We started experiencing phenomenal inflation, looking at construction costs that were going out of control. And so while this was a great exercise for us to be looking forward to saying, okay, when we hit that population number, what is the police department, what are they going to be worried about? What about parks and recreation? What about fire? The real dates and the timelines are completely out the window. Yeah, so what I would say is there's a lot of value in that document if you're focused more on when the city hits this population milestone, what is that looking like? But as far as the timeframes go, man, I mean, we were looking at 50, a population of 50,000 in nine years. That, that is not going to happen based on what's going on now in the world. But that being said, it was still a valuable exercise to go through because it was an important mental exercise for us to be thinking down the future, wait a minute, what happens when our population is 35 or 40,000? What does that mean for us on a day to day basis? Here's the other thing I would just remind everyone. Projections are really tough to do. We know even a year out projection is sometimes tough to do, let alone three, six or nine years. We're going to get to that, that timeline, right? Where we hit 40,000 population, let's say we're just, use even numbers, we're at 30,000 now. So that's a third growth. That's 33% growth. Well, like mathematically, you might think, well, that means we're going to have a 33% increase in cost. Well, the reality is between now and whatever that date is, we're not. We're not going to have a 33% increase in cost. Typically, you wouldn't, right? Because you're going to figure out how to do things more effectively, more efficiently. There's going to be better technologies that come along, better methods. You're going to figure out how to do more with less. That's just what we've always done and what we'll continue to do. But it's really hard to, to account for that. So again, just recognizing that those are valuable data points for when we hit those population numbers, but it's really hard to budget based off of that. That being said, as we look at it, I, I do think it's an important tool for say, okay, wait, what are some of those things we need to be thinking about? Vehicles, training, you know, personnel, those kind of things.
Right. Well, because I did notice like, for example, in here, it talked about how HR is upscaling some technologies, which is actually going to help them run more efficiently so they are not going to have to increase staffing like they might have to do had they not upscaled. So, but I know me, I would find it valuable if given where we are now, how many of these, what do these needs look like today based on our situation now? So I guess I'm sort of one of those people that when I'm looking at what we have to spend, I look at needs versus wants first. And I'm not one of those folks that wants to allocate money and then later on have something more urgent come up and now we're looking for money to pay for it. So I guess that's just how I'm trying to navigate this, this information, if that is helpful at all.
It does. And I want to, based on that, I want to add one more thought in here. When we were beginning this process, one of the assumptions that we gave every single department to start off with was assume that the budget dollars you're starting off with, that the service you're providing today is the level of service you're going to continue to provide in the future. So you might feel as a police department or a fire department that we really want to have a lot more bodies today than we do, or we really want to have all these things that we don't have today. But work off the assumption that the level of service we have today is the level of service we're going to have in the future. So when you look at those growth increases, none of those assume any sort of improvement in levels of service. It maintains the level of service. So when the population starts off at about 30,000 and then we project forward, well, it turns out that our population is still about 30,000. So I would say that looking at that, if I was trying to calculate, well, what does this mean? What that means is the services that we have today that are currently being budgeted for are the exact same services we started off in, in that framework. So we haven't seen the growth numbers that we were anticipating. Now, also, that being said, I do want to highlight that even though the census is basically holding us even or maybe even dropping a little bit, the reality is, there is no way, I think, that any of us would think to ourselves, you mean, we have 455 vacant homes today that we didn't have a year ago? Like, that doesn't make sense at all. I think we all know based on housing costs and what's going on with developers and their wanting to build, that that's not the case. That's just what the census gave us, right? So that's the number we worked off of.
Well, and, and to that point, a couple of things, just anecdotal, my experience is we don't have fewer people now than we did before. I feel like when I go to the Mesa, when I go, there's more people everywhere. But having said that, I think there's a, there's a variance between what the census say we serve and the people that we actually serve. And so when we're looking at budgeting, I think it's important to be mindful of the fact that we know, especially, you know, public safety, for example, we know that our officers are helping in the county a lot. They're helping in the highway a lot. And so we don't necess, I mean, in my mindset, I wouldn't want to budget with the mindset that we only serve 30,000 because I don't think that's a real number. So I sort of like, and if you ask, say, Ms. Bailey, Kimberly Bailey, if you ask her economic development wise, what do you say we are? And she says, well, we, we partner ourselves more like a pueblo, 100 to 110, because that's what we really serve. And so that's an interesting mindset for me because I think that that may be more of a step into reality than we're only serving 30,000. So that's just.
Scott, can I add something to just about the study and, and correct me if this, if this has changed, but, you know, it was originally designed, you know, we called it the three, six, nine study. And so that three, six and nine was to align that projection with the strategic plans. And so right now, if you were going to look at the outcome of that study, that first three would be kind of where we find ourselves now. So the, whatever's in that portion of the assessment from the departments would kind of be where we're at, at the moment relative to the next strategy and this, this 25, 26 budget. If that's helpful, is that correct, Scott?
If, if, that would be correct if we had grown the way those original projections have gone. Since we don't, since we haven't, then essentially we're still at the starting point of that study. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think even in the first three years, it was projected to be relatively flat in the growth and then it was going to grow in years six through nine much more significantly. So that first three year assessment portion may be a little bit closer than those out years.
Councilmember Hinton?
So I like everything that's being said. For me, when I look at the budget, I always look at the, I know we say we do, we do more with less, right? And I, I love that. But I always look at the maintenance phase, like we need to make sure whatever is set aside for each of these commodities and each of these departments, that the maintenance is appropriate. And, and for me, I go to Councilmember Duncan when she talked about the fleet, like it's important that we have that maintenance to be able to support that since we're not part of PPRTA and we're going to be, we're doing more, but with less, we need to be able to support all those departments with that maintenance stuff. And so all these departments have a maintenance phase in it, built into it. So we need to make sure as we're looking at this budget that we're able to continue to support them in their maintenance phase. IT, same thing. There's always going to be the next cyber person trying to do and we need to make sure we're on top of that. Same thing with fire, streets, all of these have a, a maintenance component. So I just asked the council as we move forward that we're looking at the maintenance part of this too as well.
We had a law, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your line. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Just a, a quick comment. We had a, a question from the audience. Yes, we can change the charter. It just takes a vote of the city on a ballot initiative. So that's, so, yeah, we can address that, but it's, it's a little longer process than just coming to us and asking us to change it. The other one is, it also gives us, I think it's an opportunity for us to work with our state legislators and get this taken care of at the state too, so we can use that as an override. Can we do that?
Do what?
So that, about the public announcement thing? So that we can do it electronically?
Most, most businesses have gone to electronic notification, as long as it goes to a certain population. And there's databases that have been created, just for example, around the storage industry.
That's business. We're talking government.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying, they are, do exist out there. So, yeah, and, and I, I know other cities that do do it electronically, so, yeah, yes.
One thing I want to mention on communications, of course, we're going to keep looking at the traditional methods of communication. I mean, we, we've talked about newspapers, right? We'll keep looking at those and figuring out how we can do that, that piece better. But where we really need to focus on is how do we access those folks in the public that maybe are really difficult to access? This is a discussion that's being had in every city, every single city in the state, I guarantee you. People just in general aren't as interested in being engaged as they used to be. And in a community like this, where there's a larger transient population of folks who are coming in and coming out, it's even more challenging. So we have to figure out, are there some creative, unique tools that we can use or methods or processes or whatever to really get the information to our community where they want to be? Because, I mean, we, we can see it is really hard to get someone to come to a city council meeting. They're not that exciting. That being said, for that, I know, it's hard to believe that. But can we provide that same information or some sort of outlet to that soccer mom who's out there with her kids on the field? You know, I mean, there are apps for everything. Is there a way that we can use some new methods and process, to, processes to really get the information out to our community who may not want to come in or may not want to take a couple hours and sit online and listen to a council meeting, but they still may be really interested in what we're doing with parks and recreation or what we're doing with streets or whatever. And, you know, I mean, I'll even go back and circle back to the PPRTA thing. That's one where our council and our roadway folk script talked a lot about, let's make sure what we're doing, all we can to educate the public. Well, again, the traditional town hall meetings maybe aren't that exciting to talk about streets, but are there other tools that we can be using to make sure that that gets them where they are? They can take a look at that app or that email or whatever when they have the chance on their time and they can engage with us in their own way. I think there's a lot of, I don't even want to say low hanging fruit, I just don't know. There's, there's fruit out there that we need to be exploring a little bit to try to figure out what can we be doing better? That will then tie into every single other objective and, and what we're trying to do with all the rest of this, these priorities as well.
It's a really good example that Scott just mentioned. I may just jump onto that. And one thing we have checked out is, for instance, text messaging. If you remember, Magellan Strategies did several great surveys for us and they really relied on MMS messaging. And so I've talked to the owner of Magellan Strategies and he's willing to help us with dataset for the phone numbers, you know, here in Fountain, so 20 to 30,000. And we talked to the company that does it, it's seven cents a message. So when you kind of do the math on that, it's like $1,500 to $2,000 a pop every time you send it out. But you will, they'll send out a public service announcement with whatever information that's useful right to people's phones right here in the area, but there's a cost associated with that each time you do it. So that's, that would be a, a example of utilizing technology and really reaching that soccer mom standing on the sideline to get something right here. And it's got, it's got our city logo and it's official city information right to their phone. And, you know, but each time we do that, it's about $1,500.
There's an article in, do you get Route 50? The Route 50 publication? Okay, I'll forward it to you. And it was on a city, they actually got a big write-up, they're using SMS. And I am not a techie person, so I don't know the difference between the two. All I know is my texts don't go through sometimes because my phone makes up its mind to do one or the other. But it was interesting, they had an article on it, so I'll, I'll send that to you. I'm not, I don't know who was next, Councilmember Rick or Councilmember Duncan? I don't know who was next.
It don't matter.
Okay.
I just wanted to, to piggyback off of, and I know we're, you were talking about the communication and beating a dead horse, but just FYI, I drove an hour and a half before I gave up all over this, you know, here Fountain, wide field security, and I couldn't find a Gazette anywhere.
So to change the topic a little, staff asked us for many things. And one of the questions we got asked that we have not answered yet is do we want to get, stay in the cemetery business or do we want to get out of it? For the public, we are running out of cemetery spaces. We don't have many left. And if we want to get, continue offering cemetery spaces, we're going to have to find some land, we're going to have to run irrigation, we're going to have to dedicate people to preparing the land to be used as a cemetery, and then we're going to have to continue to pay people to dig up the, the holes, allow somebody to come in and be buried and then fill them back in. Running out of land, we're running out of spaces. Do we want to continue in this business? Do we want to discuss that? When do we want to do it? Because they, they, they ask the question, we owe them an answer.
And I think that's a whole community discussion we have to have necessarily away from the budget, you know? But that's just my opinion. Councilmember Hinton?
So just received a message from a constituent talking about communication, kind of getting out there. Talked about the Fountain Utilities Newsletter. Do we have that, using, utilizing that as a tool too as well? Because there's all different ways people receive forms of communication. You know, you have a one demographic that likes hard copy, that likes to read on paper, and then you have the younger demographic which utilizes this a lot. So we got to find that sweet spot to be able to communicate with our residents here in Fountain. And then what that looks like, I don't know. But there's all different types of communication forms that we can kind of.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. Councilmember Hinton, then, we actually last year turned the, the Utila News, which was the Utilities Newsletter, into a citywide newsletter now called the Fountain 1859. And the Utilities and, and the city actually even did a poll and found that most people wanted it digitally. So we went to a quarterly digital version and we use Constant Contact for that, which actually provides us a lot of great data on the backend about kind of who's getting those emails and who's opening them and everything, which is very valuable to us to be sure that we're, you know, you, you know, maximizing the, the time and energy to get to where people are. So we'll continue to use that and potentially even expand the use of Constant Contact as another tool. And you're totally right. You've got to, you know, we call it information campaign. So if we have a message that we really want to get out there, we've, we got to use all of the tools, like all of the arrows in the quiver at the same time and kind of really get it out there and beat the drum consistently by putting it on social media, on the website, on, you know, in the newsletter, potentially in the radio, potentially, you know, just on the sign boards in front of the fire stations, just all of it. Just kind of really kind of flood the zone, potentially with these messages, to really get it out there and keeping it simple and short because people now want their information simple and, and short.
Yeah, I know you and I, we were talking last week or two weeks ago about kind of getting that message out. of getting that message out, it got me hyped up about, I think, the military theme that we were kind of discussing really quick, I don't know if that was a smart card, but just kind of getting that information out, and calling it whatever, Fountain 1859, whatever it is, I really like that idea, so don't stop exploring that idea. I think that's a great option, to kind of get this form of communication to, shortened to the point, you know.
Councilmember Hursburg? Thank you. I'm just a data person, I'm sorry, that's how I process, but if you are exploring your options, like the texting, and you know how much it costs per text, then to me, it would seem like we might have the ability to forecast how many times we would want a budget to do that for a year, and then that gives me a real number to look at and play with. I don't like the idea of, we have money, let's find a way to spend it. I know that's not what we're doing, but it just feels so intangible to me right now, I just, I can't quite deal. That would be the type of information I would be interested in hearing from each of the departments. They have urgent needs, this is the budget, their recommendation, and then we'd look at that real data, and make decisions based on that, as opposed to backwards earmarking money for things that might not be as much of a priority as something we hear tangibly from the city. It's just my input.
I think that's a really important point, and what I would say is that we always try to give the council sort of the first bite at the apple, so to speak, the first opportunity to tell us, as our elected leaders, as our policy decision-makers, what's really important to you, what's on your mind? We won't know, you know, what you're thinking, or what's important to you, or what you've been talking to constituents about, until you tell us, which then gives us the opportunity to go, oh, it really seems like parks is the forefront of our council's mind, or roads, or communication, or whatever the case may be. That then allows us to then get down in the weeds and start figuring out, okay, what does that mean from a dollar standpoint? What kind of projects would tie into this? Talking about, you know, that specific text thing, communication's an important thing, knowing communications was a really important thing to our council, it's one of our strategic priorities, here's some tools that we're going to come back with. And so, then the staff does develop those dollars, those figures, comes back to you, and the council might go, whoa, that is way higher than I thought it would be. And so, you know, let's pivot, let's change. Or they may say, yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense, that meets our desires and whatnot. We just try to give the council, before we make assumptions and jump in and start developing numbers, give the council this opportunity to go, okay, guys, here's what we're thinking, now go and figure out some costs for us, and then we do, we have to come back to you, and then you guys really, will then have some hard numbers. And we'll come back with you, to you, with a couple things. We'll come back with some, for example, we've been talking a lot about communications, we'll come back with some numbers around communications, and some ideas, and some specific objectives that will tie into that. But we'll also come back with other things that the council may not have even thought about, but our staff has been thinking about, our staff's saying, you know, this is a really important thing, for example, when we talk about communications, our website's going down, and so the council might not have talked about, I'm using this as an example, and so, this is something that's really important, so we're going to also propose da-da-da-da-da, we think it ties in with the council priorities, council, what do you think? And then you guys might go, oh, yeah, we didn't even think about that, but that's a great thing, or, no, let's hold off. Does that make sense?
Oh, it does.
I know what you're saying.
It does, and I imagine there's going to be seven different answers to that. So, just so my opinion, my one of seven, would be a mindset of who we serve, not just what the census say we serve, with a focus on always public safety, infrastructure, and I think economic development, making sure that we're doing everything that we can to make this a business-friendly city, would be my one of seven opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, I'm along the lines of Councilwoman Hursburg, about, you know, coming straight to council with the numbers, not what your wish list, and what you think you want, but we owe it to the citizens to drill down on these budget numbers, that's who we work for. And so, I want to make sure that as those, each department come with their number, it's not a wish list, we really need hard and true numbers when it comes to the budget, and you can expect from me, I'm going to hold you accountable to that, because that's just the right thing to do. So, when you do come, whatever numbers you got, make sure that we, they're true numbers, and that they're not just, you know, wished, made-up numbers, because then I'm going to ask, I'm like, you know, hours' salary, are they truly working these things, right? And so, let's just make sure that the numbers that are come by each department, that they're true numbers.
Councilmember Duncan?
I've been sitting here going through all of these notes, that I've taken through all of these different meetings we have, and I don't see anything on here that we discussed about the future of fire station that we were proposing. Maybe if we go back to the slide about the fire, the police and fire, I mean, I would hate to not say that that's a priority of mine, but I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but we haven't, I don't see where we discussed that. So, any, you know, anybody want to say anything about that?
I think we're looking at the money to come in from 2B, and have to save it for, plus some money that we have from the GID.
But as far as the staffing part, do we, are we setting aside any money for that part, or does that cover?
Sorry, things I turned on.
You've been here so long, your battery's dead, huh?
Right, no, it's working. So, we're taking, we're moving forward with the assumption that the council's already given us direction around the firehouse, so we will be coming back to you as we nail down the figures for the firehouse itself, and then also, some potential dollars around the staffing. So, that'll be the, that's a great example, the kind of thing that the council has had conversations with in the past, we're taking it and continuing that on, even though the council may be pivoting with some of these strategic priorities, we know that that's been an important thing, and so we're going to continue, and so you will see proposals to that effect, yeah.
I'd like to bring up a couple that I haven't heard mentioned either, and, well, more than a couple, you know me. Okay, first of all, we've got a lot of state mandates coming down, and some of those state mandates are pretty expensive, I want to make sure that we're budgeting those into our, you know, I'm just thinking of the one, we got a grace period for the webpage for a year, which is what we were working with the state to request, assuming we only get a year, that is going to take extensive amount of money and time to redo that website, to make it ADA compliant with what the state wants. And there's just other mandates that are coming down, for the one, did the one pass where we had to switch all our lawn mowers, and weed whackers, and that kind of stuff to batteries, as opposed to gas?
I think that, I think it's that specifically for state, for the state.
It is, but, I mean, those are things we need to...
It's the kind of thing that we're look, no, but I mean, state departments.
Right.
So, that's the kind of thing that, it won't surprise me for it to come back and impact us in the future, but this first doesn't impact us.
But I think we need to evaluate some of those state mandates that are coming down, and be budgeting for those. Secondly, when we had our work session, we heard from the Parks Department that they were needing an increase in staffing, and potentially everything that goes with that. Our parks are being really, really heavily used, if you try to go use a park, or go to a park during a weekend, I think people have just changed, rather than having parties and big events at their houses, and I toured some of the new construction in the area over the weekend, those backyards are tiny, tiny, so a lot of times you don't have any choice to use the parks. I think we really need to evaluate how our parks are being used, and what do we need to keep them in, the condition, or even improve the condition of where they're at now, and everything we need to go with that, whatever that entails, I don't know if that's people, equipment, both, but I just think, I think people are just enjoying being outdoors more. Our code enforcement department is dealing a lot more than ever anticipated with the unhoused in our communities, and we need to make sure we have the staff available to be doing that, and I'm sure they're interacting a lot with the beacon unit and things on that, too, but we can't expect them to be doing code enforcement for yards, and fields, and things like that, if, is it a third of your time is used with homeless?
At least.
About a third of their time is being used for something, it wasn't even in their job description when code enforcement was created, and so I think that's something we need to evaluate, because that is definitely an area where we want to make sure everybody's trained and well-staffed, and things are being done correctly. And, you know, if we look at the court document, docket, and the amount of court cases that are coming through from code enforcement, we need to make sure that if they're spending an entire day in court, that there's still people out on the street doing the rest of the job, so. And then, when we're working on the website, the, one of the most requested things is, you go on the website, try to search something, and people get so frustrated. I think that's something that, if it can be addressed in a kind of a speedy way, I just, I don't, I don't know how to do it.
Yeah, the new website, Mayor, runs off in a totally different system, so it will have a new look, and I think the search features will be much better, so. The current website just has its limitations, and was one of the reasons why we're moving away from it.
Okay. Councilmember Rick?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. First, for Councilmember Duncan, had a conversation with Scott and the fire chief, two things in specific that I asked him, is, right now, we have like $2.4 million in our fund to build a fire station, we, the feedback we got was, well, I need six to, six and a half to eight. That's great, tell me what you can give me for two and a half, 2.4 million, okay? I have asked for that, for them to come back with that. Secondly, the thing I talked about was, with regards to staffing, most fire departments in our area have per diem, or part-time firefighter positions, and volunteer firefighter positions, that they use to cover when somebody's on vacation, when somebody's on disability, or whatever. I asked him to look at that, rather than us giving them more full-time positions, which obviously takes more money. So, I've asked for that, and I've been told they're working on it, to come back to us. Second, for Scott, as I said earlier, parks came back and said, hey, do we want to get in, and into the cemetery business or not? There were several other departments that had requests for us. Can you consolidate that list of what the questions they had, so that the next time we talk about this, we've got all those questions from the department heads? I know we got them individually from each department head, but if we can have them, so we can kind of go through them, and figure that out.
From that, from that earlier meeting that we had, yep, yep, you bet.
Finally, I want to talk about us being business-friendly. I do a lot of communication with the staff, particularly planning and the deputy city We have been accused of being not business-friendly for a while. However, that phrase can get overused. You know, for example, we had an individual who wanted to start a farm camp, he had 120 kids, and he wanted to go through one bathroom. And when we told him no, when the city told him no, it's, well, you're not business-friendly. We had a developer who is building three-story homes here in Fountain, who wants us to narrow the streets to 30 feet wide. Doesn't sound like a big deal, but the fire department says they need between 34 and 36 feet wide to extend the arms for the ladder truck to get up to that third floor. And when we said, we need 36 feet wide streets, the answer was, well, you're not business-friendly. We have had a developer come, or a builder come in, and want to put sidewalks right on top of where the electric lines, the cable lines, the gas lines, they want to put it right over our utility easement, which means that anytime we would have to go in, or the homeowner would have to go in and dig up and deal with a problem, the homeowner would have to replace the sidewalk. And when the city said, hey, you got to move the sidewalk, you can't have it over the utility easement, the response was, well, you're not business-friendly. So, I think we need to be careful when we talk about being business-friendly, we need to ask people, okay, give me a specific example of when we're not business-friendly, and dig into it, and try and find what we can do for that individual situation, rather than just accept, well, you're not business-friendly, because that tends to be the default excuse that businesses are using as to why they're not dealing with Fountain. And that's, nothing against you, but I got to share my experiences of dealing with, we're not business-friendly.
Councilmember Hinton?
So, just to go along your comment, Mayor, about parks, I drove by this morning, and it looked like a battalion-sized element, and they took the whole park at John Metcalf, they took everything. So, I understand that the pressure and the stress that we have in our parks, especially the summertime, everybody's getting out, and it looks like our military is utilizing Metcalf Park for their, for their parties and their staff, which is great, but once again, it goes back to that maintenance phase. Once they're done, we now have to maintain that park, and get it back up to a certain standard, so somebody else can utilize it. So, I just want to make sure that we pay particularly coaches attention to our parks and wrecks, and making sure that they're squared away, too, as well.
By the way, just real quickly, we're making notes, furiously, we will compare these notes, and we'll create a compilation, and we'll send it all out to you to make sure, hey, did we miss anything, did we misunderstand something as well, just so you can all see that written down. I do want to mention one thing, if I could, on the business-friendly side of the, oh, sorry.
Let's go ahead.
There, I really appreciate those comments. When we sort of self-evaluate on where we could be doing better for businesses, there's really two areas that we internally highlight and say, this is where we need some help. We need to get planning staff, and it's just a constant struggle. We look at our two vacancies in planning staff, and if you are a business owner, you know, you want to open a new business, you got a developer, whatever, you want to do something, and you're stuck with this slow process, because we are only down to one of three planners, that is really frustrating. We know that's frustrating, it's frustrating to our folks as well, so it puts that workload on one person, and so we continue to power forward to try to get that position filled. And I would tell you that, from a pay standpoint, we're actually paying what the market's paying, when we look at what other cities are paying, and other communities around the state that are also trying to attract planners in, it's just a tough world right now to get planners, and so that's why we're going out and working with a consulting planner right now to help us out with that. The other thing is, we have some areas where our codes are outdated, they need to be updated, and we need to do a deep dive, and so one of the requests I will have, coming back to this, and I don't know what this means from a budgetary standpoint, but we need to figure out, what would it take for us to do a deep dive? Some of it is stuff that we can just do, as we evaluate our codes, right? In fact, currently, Tish is working through some of the code enforcement stuff, we have Joni working through some codes, so we have a group of our internal staff that are working through some code fixes that we need done, but we need to, I know, we've talked several years in a row about needing to update our comp plan, which then feeds into a zoning code, but when you're down to one staff member who's running the whole show, it's pretty tough. Those are real, like, that's the reality of what developers and business owners are dealing with, that they know, I mean, we even get comments from those who know we're short-staffed, they get it, it just doesn't help them out when they're trying to get a business open. So, those are areas that I think we will be trying to present some ideas on with this budget, that hopefully we can get some help from the council on.
Councilmember Estes?
I just want to jump on with Gordon about this. It's not just that we're not business-friendly, we hear all the negatives about Fountain, remember to look at your source, remember that it's, ask for specifics, and don't just say, utility sucks. Ask what the specific is, you know, the PD sucks, why? Give me an example, so don't, you know, that's our way to fight back on that negative, negativity, is to say, okay, give me the example, and not a generalization, an actual example of what they're talking about.
A recent example?
A recent example.
Councilmember Hinton?
All right, so business-friendly may not have been the best way to describe what I was trying to say, obviously, but no, timeliness and efficiency, I think, are probably the better words. When talking with Kimberly, you know, she lamented about the fact that her documents were out of, out of order, or outdated, I think she said she's working off documents that were like 2015, and so when businesses come in, they're constantly having to ask... having to ask for exceptions or whatnot because they're not compliant. So when I say business friendly, I really should probably say business efficient. Are we meeting timelines in a way that businesses can actually do business with us? Or are timelines such that they've got to go somewhere else in respect of their time? So I think that would probably be better stated that way.
Thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
So I just want to get a quick shout out to code enforcement. I was, I had this talk with Todd and Scott last week, you know, since being on city council, as I drive through the city, I see more things now. Before, it didn't really matter to me. But now, being part of city council, I can't help but not see some discrepancy. And so there was a discrepancy that was, a person thought he could just open up a salvage yard, looks like Sanford and Son, and I drove by today and it's gone. So code enforcement got involved in that. So I appreciate you, Tish, and getting that involved and because it's an eyesore on the city and kind of, you know, what we don't want to present for the city of Fountain. So just code enforcement is doing their thing with limited personnel. We really need to just kind of think about that because as a city, as a city grows, and as you just alluded to, Scott, we really probably need to talk, look more at our codes and things of that nature kind of moving forward. Yeah.
There's a net. Sorry. Yeah. And one other thing I know came out in, when we were talking strategic plans, is PD has outgrown their evidence storage. And so I think that's something we need to look at seriously. Because that's another area where it's probably more mandates and different things coming by and, and different things. And so we really don't want things being stored where we have people working out and sleeping and that kind of stuff. We, we need to make sure we're storing things properly. So. Great discussion amongst all of us. Did you have something else to say?
I did. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
Sorry you don't invite me to budget things.
No, I am so excited to have somebody else here that's excited about budget.
These, the topics, see, what we're talking about now are the, are the need tos, have tos, you know, storage, staffing, so that we can function in an efficient way that makes us competitive with other cities. And those are the things I want to see first before we talk about the, oh, I wish we could, or it would be nice to. So I think that's really what I'm asking for is I want to know first from the staff, what are the needs so that we can function efficiently and effectively and do better as a collective? That's kind of, I think, was my point.
And I just want to remind council and citizens who are here, when they will give us down the road, a budget for the year, their, their budget proposal, that does not include any staff salary increases in it. So be thinking of that when, when you're looking at the numbers and everything. I really would like to open up the audience. I know we have a couple of people here who have been very, very patient here for over two and a half hours. Do either one of you have any questions or comments about anything?
You're representing all the Fountain residents?
Okay, you each, you're representing about 15,000 people. So this is your, and then IT, I'll ask you for online. Yeah, yes.
In that case, just a couple of notes, Steve RC, just a couple of notes that I did come up with. One about the charter, yes, I was the one that sent the email about the charter. Just because it seemed like that would be, that would be something that would be worthwhile taking to the voters of dealing with something that is antiquated, that is making it prohibited of, you know, like you said, you went all over security WAF of Fountain trying to find a, you know, a copy of the, of the newspaper. I'm like, I can't remember the last time I picked one up. So there are a lot of different ways that we could approach the communication aspect of it. You know, and I understand that, you know, that some of us are in that mindset of, we want numbers for basic things. I think we all want numbers. But if we're going to look at how we can shape this budget to come into compliance with our strategic plan, and we look at some of the things within our strategic plan, I think there are some wants we should start looking at as well. One of those being is that, you know, there had been talk several times over the years over a Fountain internet access for all residents of Fountain across the board. And I'm not sure where that went or where that was exactly going to improve. But when you talk about being able to improve communication, I think that that would certainly be one thing that we should start looking at. Because obviously, you know, knowledge is power. The more knowledge that people have access to, the more legitimate knowledge that people have access to, I think that that is certainly one way to, to move forward to it. And then the other thing being is, you know, you kind of talked about the aspect of looking at, are we going to, you know, we're running out of cemetery space. One of the first things we talk about is the small-town appeal of Fountain. And, you know, I, I walk the cemetery all the time, not because I'm creepy, but because I admire the history that is there. And I think that that, you know, again, coming in line with our strategic plan about what our mission statement is, you know, we need to look not just at advancing technologies, but also look at what makes Fountain actually Fountain and, and continue to promote those, you know, those, those not necessarily values, but those aspects of us that, that people want to come to Fountain for, that people want to stay in Fountain for. And those are the only two notes that I took that were specific to budget. Thank you.
Mr. Arger?
RC.
RC?
Yeah.
I do kind of have one answer. We spent, gosh, well over a year with our IT department doing a really, really in-depth research to see if it would be feasible to set up almost like another utility in the city.
Right.
And they came to the conclusion that it was not feasible. And so that's why we went with underground, under?
Underline.
Underline?
Okay, I wanted to call them underwire and I knew that wasn't right. So I didn't want to, I didn't want to go there. Okay, underline. Thank you. I'd rather get it wrong a different way, right? And, and that has just been a lot slower to deploy than I think any of us anticipated and wish it would be.
Yeah.
I was hoping, you know, it would be much greater deployment.
Well, thank you for the, thank you for the update to that. Because I had heard and then I didn't hear anything beyond that.
Yeah. And I'm sure Mr. Blankenship, who just walked in, would be more than happy to meet with you or someone, set up someone from his department that could meet with you and, and give you an update on that.
And, and then one other, I do apologize, one other one that I, that Todd and I have talked about on numerous times, because we talk about the damage to our streets, et cetera, from having multiple different garbage providers.
Oh, gosh.
You know, we've talked about.
You're going to give me a stroke. I know, I'm just teasing you.
But, you know, and, and we've, and he and I have had this discussion several times about, you know, the legalities of it, as well as the cost of it. But, you know, if we can't have a single source, why can't we do it ourselves? And if we're going to look at the long-term plan, why not start looking at planning on having that? Because I'd rather give my $90 every three months or so, it keeps going up, to Fountain versus some large business. It ain't no small business that's doing that. Those are run by much larger corporations. And you know that money's not staying in the community. So that would certainly be one thing that I think kind of falls both in that category of want and need. Thank you.
Yeah. And one, one last thing. On the cemetery?
Yes.
I think the discussion's probably going to go around, do we want to have a public-private partnership? Where does that expense come out? We're not specialties in that area. We have no idea what you're even allowed to have any longer in terms of how to build one or, you know, and then you have to have some type of perpetual maintenance fund, which the cemetery we currently have was not set up with that. And so that's why it's costing the city such a great amount of money right now to maintain that cemetery, because they didn't, it wasn't set up that way.
So maybe just looking for a more efficient way to do it.
Do we want to, the public-private partnership could be a variety of things. And I don't even want to go into speculation here because, you know, I'll be all over Facebook tomorrow saying I said something. So if you'd like to give me a call, I'd be more than happy to discuss some of the ideas.
You know that's going to happen anyway, right?
Yeah, I know. I know. I'm very popular out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Daryl? Call you by name since you're the last one out there, hasn't said anything. State your name for the record, please.
I appreciate a lot of the things that have been brought up tonight, especially about how we address in, in terms of real numbers, the things that we're trying to deal with instead of, instead of wishes and hopes. Our city, as, as Scott has alluded to a number of times tonight, really hasn't seen the growth that we projected. And yet a lot of our budget items have really grown much more than the city has. And I think there are places that, that we need to say, what is really important? What is, what are we really supposed to be providing to our citizens? What is the fundamental things that we're, that we should be providing? And then go back and assess other wants and wishes. And I appreciate that. One of the things that I, probably when you heard me chuckle about the charter was, you know, the charter was written, what, I don't even remember now. I looked it up at one time. It's been a while. But obviously, we didn't have all the access to the, to the technology that we have now. I've worked in data and technology for the last 25 years. There's a lot of stuff we could be doing if we, if we changed with the time that could save us a lot of money. Instead of farming all this stuff out to somebody else, I mean, I've been a businessman all my life. I wouldn't mind farming it out to me. But that's, I'm not talking, I'm.
No, I understand what you're saying.
I'm making an illusion here. I'm not talking about myself. But I think that if, when we, when we do that, we're at the, we're at the, we have, over the years, we've spent a lot of money on, on people that counseled us on how to do things, on people that even that, that counseled us on how to rewrite our, our.
Zoning.
Zoning. Only to come back with things that were really stupid and ridiculous in it. And, yeah, I'm, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but I'm just saying, this is the function that the city should be providing. If it's not providing those things, then we're really just messing around in the weeds and doing stuff with people's money that we don't have any business doing unless it's really approved and asked for by the majority of citizens. So there's some good ideas, there's, but I think that we need to, I definitely think we need to change the charter. And, I mean, we don't even have a city newspaper anymore and it's, and, and as a couple of people said, who reads the Gazette anymore? And as far as putting things in the, in the utility letters, now that that's done online, there's very few people that get the utility letters. And when you go to pay your utility bill, it says, quick pay, ching, nobody reads it anyway. So we have to think, I don't want to say outside the box, we've got to think forward about how people are doing things nowadays and how we can do things to make our city efficient. Because there are, we're falling behind. And we need to think strategically about how we, I mean, I, I think I've said enough. Yeah. Okay. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Scott, Shauna, did you want to wrap anything up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Bezzie, if you could go to the last slide. And I will end here. I appreciate all the comments this evening. We've been taking notes, like Scott said, and Megan and Jen and my staff have been taking notes. And we'll put everything together and work with the departments as we come up with the budget. So the last thing that I'd like to go over, and I apologize that this is kind of small, I did include it in your packets as well, is the tentative budget calendar going forward for the rest of this year. So through the month of June, we will actually have our departments go into the system, into the software and start putting in their budget requests based off the direction that we've received this evening. And we'll start putting together some new personnel funding requests for whatever departments have requested that. And then during the month of July, we will actually go through and actually meet with our departments individually and go through their budgets line by line. And we will focus on the needs versus the wants and see what falls out there. And then in August is when we will actually, my finance team and myself will spend the month of August putting things together into the actual budget document and getting the proposed budget document together for you. And then the first week of September, first week or two of September, we'll get that proposed budget document out to you. So that way you'll have time to review it and, you know, make your comments, your questions. And then we'll do the first work session, hopefully around the end of September, second work session, because it is the biannual budget. And we have so many departments, we'll need two work sessions to, to tackle the general fund, of course, separately. And then the utility is probably the second night. So we'll get those done the, in September and October. And then hopefully, make any changes that you guys have. And then that way we can do the first reading of the budget, either by the end of October or first meeting in November.
Okay. And these are going to be separate budget work sessions away from when we're voting on it in council?
Correct.
Okay. I think we need a minimum of two. A lot of years, for some reason, we end up with one. And then they consider the first reading, the second work session. And I'd really like to have two full work sessions. I'd like to have them be a minimum of three hours each.
Okay.
There's just too many questions that come up and, and departments end up getting rushed through. IT always gets, seems to get the brunt of it for some reason. And I think we just need to dedicate the time for this. If you can't stay the whole three hours, stay what you can. But it's just too critical. And, and we cannot keep kind of short-changing this.
Absolutely. We can definitely schedule two for separate work sessions. And then if we need to, we can also set a tentative third date, just in case something happens to where we maybe have to have a short third session as well.
I, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, and council members, please be reaching out to staff with your questions and, and things. So, all right. Is there any further questions on this item on the agenda from anybody up here? Anybody in the audience? Last chance. Okay, we, I'm sorry.
We have an executive session?
We do not. Really quick.
I said the camera.
You, no, oh, hush. She wants to request an executive session. Her mic battery doesn't work any longer. Okay. All right, city council, I'm just going to open it up. Anybody put your mic on if you have an agenda request? Councilmember Rick?
Yes. Recently, we had someone arrested because we have license plate readers on our police cars. I was not aware we had that. I would, and I talked to the city manager about this. I would like to get a presentation for both the council and the public so that we can better understand this, license plate reader software. Also, Chief, you said that stores are going to, like Walmart and stuff are going to be putting readers in their parking lots. We're going to get access to that. If you could kind of put those two together into one presentation so that we can educate the public on this, I would appreciate it. And whenever it's convenient for you, not requesting a specific session, just whenever it works for you guys.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty. I would like to have an agenda item on a council discussion on what Sheriff Royball said about a couple of different items. The first one and being if we want to discuss being a non-sanctuary city. And is everybody okay with having a discussion on that?
Yeah.
Okay. And that, and I would like to request also that we ask our city attorney to do some research on the Pueblo ordinance on the safe injection sites. We know there's two in Colorado Springs that have opened up. They've been running a couple of years. They did, it sounds like, from what is being reported, they did not follow the state mandates for those in terms of having to discuss it with the sheriff's department and different things. And so I'd like to make sure we're in a good place so that we don't have one of those get dropped on our doorstep. Is everybody okay with that, too?
Yeah.
We've, we've looked at it before, but hadn't really come to any ideas. And so Pueblo seems to have done that. So, okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay. With that, we are adjourned.